The time taken location of this meeting was published in the Adaway Parks Press and classified as important in the office of the township of Lake with at least forty-eight hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting at reasonable confidence. The minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the open public meetings. Mr. Fuentes, Mr. Garfield, Mr. Stern, Mr. Sable, Mr. Flantrum, Mr. Hertzler, Mr. Iserson, Mr. Renner, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Ross.
Mr. Sable, thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you. Just a reminder, Chairman, we do have a new sound system in the cloakroom. The mics are very sensitive to side conversations, which can make it difficult to hear presenters when they're speaking, so please try and put side conversations to a minimum. There is a mute button on the mics that you can use if necessary, if you need to just leave it or mute it from there. As a reminder to presenters, when you're standing at the podium here, it is helpful if you can try and keep the mic with you. I know we're often walking back and forth to the boards over there, but as you walk away from the mic, we lose you on the recording, so if Mr. Flannery, Mr. Kettering could keep the mic open, that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Swearing on professionals?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and not be misinterpreted?
Yes. Our little session of resolutions.
Yes, the first resolution we have up has asked to carry the resolution again. There's still working on some changes in Mr. Jackson's office and Mr. Rhodes' office. You're going to skip that one. For the rest, it looks like Mr. Iserson and Mr. Renner are not here for those for that meeting, so it will be the same, but those resolutions, the rest of these are fine. The first is SB twenty-two thirty-three, which is an extension.
Is it the number five, right?
Correct.
Mr. Fuentes?
All second.
Second.
Yes, second. All in favor, aye.
SB twenty-three twenty-four, also an extension.
All in favor, aye.
SB twenty-three sixty-five, minor subdivision.
All in second, all in favor, aye.
SB twenty-two twenty-four, major site plan.
All in second, all in favor, aye.
SB twenty-two ninety-six, major site plan.
All in second, all in favor, aye.
And SB twenty-three fifty-four, major subdivision.
All in second, all in favor, aye.
I'd love to reference what Mr. Sable was at the end of the day.
Ordinance correspondence.
Under ordinance and correspondence, the first is a resolution which we have used several times there. It's from the committee saying that ordinance for the board's review, my understanding of this ordinance after reviewing it is that it's actually made use of corrections to the existing ordinance. For example, when the twenty-seventeen dash fifty-one ordinance was adopted, it made some of the changes requested by the master plan. There had been a recent ordinance which changed the parking requirements for businesses. You'll see this on what's listed as page one of those ordinance. The recent ordinance that had been reviewed by this board and adopted, the committee changed the parking requirements from three hundred down to two fifty. However, in the direct of the master plan ordinance, which followed this change, the company that was preparing the master plan ordinance did not know of that other rule of adoption, so they incorrectly referenced the old one with three hundred square foot requirement. So the committee is attempting to clean up some of those mistakes, so they incorrect ordinances or all of the books. I did redo this in detail myself, as well as ask for input from the zoning officer, because I know that, for example, the chart listed in the very back of the ordinance has historically had errors in the ordinance because it's often not updated when changes are made to the zone. The only thing that I found after consulting with the zoning officer is that on page seven, there are requirements listed for the R fifteen zone. You'll see fifteen thousand square foot area requirement. There's no title for the zone in that column.
The R fifteen was slashed down the ceiling?
Right, there's no regular R fifteen. Right above that is blank, just the title right there. Further down at the B four, there are requirements listed for front under your setback in nineteen fifteen ten, but within the co-book, the requirements are actually twenty-five hundred thirty. I believe the chart is incorrect.
Why are we voting on this not approved?
Because the committee sent it to us and asked for our comment, asked for pardon me, your comment. I advise you, in my review, those are things that I found that I believe are errors. I didn't see any issues with ordinance, no one from the committee is really going through it, but I think it's pretty simple.
Any questions regarding the ordinance?
Can I give you a second?
Yes.
Were you increased with non-parking?
There had been concern back in twenty-seventeen that all these parking requirements were listed in several different places in the co-book, as we say that depending on the zoning we're in, the type of opportunity we're proposing. This is the standard case in the ordinance book that lists parking requirements for retail uses, offices, shopping centers, and this board had recommended a change, and the committee enacted that change, to go from one parking space for three hundred to one parking space for two fifty, which is more parking per square footage. That change was approved and enacted, and then the master plan accidentally reincorporated out the language.
And the front yard setback was part of it? Which, that second step was page two five?
Page five, yes. Those zones no longer exist. So what they're doing is they've highlighted zones to remove from the list, which is the R twelve B, R twelve C, R twelve D, and R thirteen A. Those are removed.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes. Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Um, sorry, Mr. Hertzler?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Iserson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Mr. Sable, thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes. Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Um, sorry, Mr. Hertzler?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Iserson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, also under this section, we have two correspondence items. First, which is for SB twenty-two twenty-six, Verinos de Vora. We have a copy of plan there, as well as the correspondence request. Mr. Flannery, podium. Typically, Mr. Jackson has indicated that correspondence stand by zone, but if the board elect to take testimony and board asks questions, that certainly is correct.
Who's over here? Mr. Carr? Harry, do you have anything to add to this?
We do not, Chairman. We're going to hear the best of what Mr. Ward wants to say. My understanding is, they're swapping out this proposed approved building that was part of a school that's now located in the campus, and as such, it's not going to have any additional parking requirements. But that's my position.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ward.
Thank you. Good evening. Verinos de Vora Inc. Yes, I presume your understanding is pretty accurate. This is a previously approved approval for a daycare, which I imagine board will report. The applicant has elected not to erect a daycare. It's going to be only a gym for the existing school. That being said, there are no additional parking requirements, there's no additional traffic requirements. The only thing I would ask is that the applicant does not have to improve, do you want to improve any roads in connection with this? It's really just an extension of the existing school. It's not, like I said, going to bring, I think, I think when this got approved, there was some requirement to pave, to improve. I think it was to improve Vine, which has really no relevance to this at all.
Mr. Ward, I'm sorry, I believe that was a very specific condition in the last approval, and if you're making changes such as that, which I did not notice, or including in this correspondence request, I think you need specifically an amended approval to not prove those very specific conditions the board imposed on the applicant.
First, I don't even see points.
Vermont, I'm sorry. Vermont, Vermont. Vermont is actually on the other side of the existing building where the addition is going to be.
Which required a waiver from it being approved when the applicant made their last applications, and or granted the waiver when they went to the original school, or granted a partial waiver when they requested a daycare. Suppose now they're requesting a full waiver, which is not letting into this.
Just one second. They, they have an obligation for them, and we require them to do the road.
Because that road is being used to access schools behind it, and this school is present.
It's, well, it's not, it doesn't need the schools behind it. I think, I think at that, at that meeting, somebody got up and made a request that it may, in the future, lead to things that are behind it. There are no schools that are currently behind it. It doesn't need anywhere now, and it doesn't help this school in any way, in any way, for it.
The zoning officer and tax officer have to provide to me that this applicant has actually fenced off the right of way behind the property and put their catch ball court in the right of way, or pass through the volleyball court. Taxes was after the last week when it was clear taxes and schools in the east, and also principal. There's cars that park back there, they have to fence the right of way. So, um, again, they don't want to be using any of those roadways, but it sounds like it's a very specific condition from the original approval that it's been waived, and specifically requirements need approved, and you have no requirements.
Do we have a problem with this?
The applicant did not provide that with their question.
I would agree with what Ally is saying, if there's any changes being made.
And has to be noticed?
Yes. If that is in case what's going on.
Well, it could actually be done as a site plan exemption, which would require, now, just because if, there's no variance, that would be released associated with a site plan. This is a site plan, this is adding a gym to existing school.
The only thing that was a condition that was...
Well, it was a condition over daycare. The other site plan approval was to put a daycare back there, bringing in more people, more traffic. The, the criteria for a site plan exemption, there's a straightforward one of fifteen hundred square feet. The other one is that we can show the reasons why a site plan is needed.
I think it's a selective application, like ask for a site plan.
I, I, I think it says that a site plan exemption is not a new application.
The application for the, the application for the actual square footage of the building to be added has been approved. We're changing the use of that portion that we're going to add, which is why Brian's categorizing it as a site plan exemption.
Size is the same what you...
Size is the same.
One second.
Small, is it small?
Yeah, yeah.
He's not small, but he's talking to me.
Okay.
Uh, you can swear a minute if you want to, but otherwise, he's talking to me.
I'm not sure if the...
It's, there's no reason, there's no reason to swear. It's, it's actually smaller, it's smaller than what was proposed beforehand. It's a different use, because this gym is literally only going to service the existing girls in the school. There aren't going to be any outside cars, it's not bringing in any new traffic. The reason that the board imposed the condition of paving Vermont Avenue is because we're bringing in a daycare, which is a whole new facility. It's a different business, it certainly was going to bring in a lot of vehicle traffic.
Let's just say for our intent, we're losing those, as a site plan exemption, we must include them now?
A site plan exemption specifically requires notice in the ordinance. I believe Mr. Flannery encouraged that he could apply to me for a site plan exemption, but we don't hear what's going on right now. Billy?
If he wants to change it from what?
I mean, unless he wants to ask the applicant himself, but then he needs to be sworn.
I don't know if it works, but if he wanted to, if the applicant would want to change from gym to a school, they have multiple processes, they have multiple...
If he's not changing the square footage and it's approved, it's already approved, he's not changing the, he's not changing the building. Right? But, make it into daycare?
Classrooms, not classrooms.
That would be, that would be in the interim, that he would just come to the building department. It's already built. If he wanted to change it from a gym to a daycare, we'd have to come back and get another approval, because it's a different use.
Do you want to change it from a gym to a daycare, or from gym to a school building, from gym to...
Well, gym to a daycare is different than gym to classrooms. Gym to classrooms is all part of the school use. So that would be done at the building department, that would even require a visit to the county ward. Gym to a daycare, I believe, more.
One last question, Chairman, if I could go ahead. If you, if it were to change and go to the zoning department, what happens if you get a huge change that the exception of the road that was originally required now is leaked?
Well, you can change it to the daycare as parking requirement, but you can't change one use for another, you don't need the parking requirement.
But I thought you mean the parking requirements would be approved, you already had, and you're not proposing to change anything that was previously approved, except you use the building differently, so all that to your parking, theoretically, it would be there.
That was my question, are you, do you want to do anything other than...
We're not, we're leaving the existing facilities that they are putting in a gym, to leave that qualified as a site plan exemption.
It does, and it should not be before this board. The way it was explained to me is that if you have an approval, and rather than building a building and using it for daycare, you're going to build that building, and leave approval, and use it for a gym instead. That, to me, sounded like a correspondence request, it's no longer sounding like a correspondence request.
Yeah, if it's anything other than that, it's, I don't think it is either. Is it something other than that?
Well, it's that, but they don't want to put in the improvements, they don't need the additional parking, there's no need for additional parking, and there's no need to approve the roadways. Otherwise, it's that. It is really that, it is really that delete that they're going to change from being a daycare to being a gym, in other words, being part of the school building. Therefore, there's no new parking requirements, because it's the same students that are using the gym, there's no new staff requirements, there's nothing being changed by it. So there's no reason to have to put in the parking, and there's no reason to have to put in the improvements with the road. That is the reason that if you believe it could be done as a correspondence matter. But, mind you, I found out I was handling this about ten minutes before this meeting, so...
My only question is, if it has to be noticed, now, I might agree that it comes to correspondence, but could be into a restriction that we take notice?
Site plan exemptions are known as money change for residential, but not residential. The section of the ordinance eighteen hit six oh one, exceptions to application requirements. So if the applicant, them, putting them, right, but because including conditions pertaining to the subject are partial, the little enforcement of this section is detract from, will exact some enforcement, claiming for it may permit such exemptions as may be reasonable within the general purpose of the passage of the law. I think this fits that, maybe we need, grab my notice to testify, they explain to you the situation, and, and I apologize, I got a lot more notice than, than nearly, I got now. But if I had submitted this, I would have submitted that a site plan exemption, which would have led to...
One second, Mr. Ward.
What could you put in this resolution, or what could you provide this board, that if, if everything's changed to, to, to anything but a gym, it comes back?
You could put exactly that in the resolution, we have no problem with that. That as long as it's only being used as a gym, so that there are no new students being, and no new, there's no new traffic, I guess I should say, there's no new traffic, there's no new staff requirements on account, but it's...
Mr. Renner, unfortunately, typically because correspondence item is not considered formal action, and is not considered a material change, there is no resolution from this action. I simply stated, like I said, four degrees, this is not a material change, and does not need their action. So if it's going to be taking action, typically that indicates that an amended approval, some kind of notification is required, specifically in light of fact that a waiver is required from approving the plan.
Well, the board could, uh, perhaps a resolution granting a site plan exemption, and then, uh, the attorney's office could prepare a resolution that found these conditions, or as that motion to approve a site plan exemption. And a site plan exemption, since you're not doing a site plan, you're not required to do the other improvement, and, and you have conditions in there, so that if anything more than a gym comes in, they have to do the site plan, and they have to do all the improvements required for you to...
That's why it actually comes for as long as, those people, I don't know, I forgot the whole gathering. Is it legal or not to, to sign a notice?
Mr. Flannery, do you want to give a chilling in this section of the ordinance you're referencing?
Yeah.
If you're dealing with it, if it's about special circumstances where the board can grant a site plan exemption.
It's eighteen six oh one.
Typically, an addition unless, typically, an addition unless the fifteen hundred square feet is not required in the original, I believe that, applied to this in this case, but I'm not sure why they brought it forward.
Addition, is it an addition?
Well, addition to existing site plans.
The only thing is, we have a decision that the board made, and...
Well, essentially, they're abandoning the previous approval, and you can direct that exemption. If they were to do that, then they're not requesting a waiver from the right of way who's issued the previous, required.
What does it take to have a, okay, just, we...
They could submit a formal withdrawal if that is the board, if they might...
Please be quiet in the audience.
Yeah, I understand, Mr. Renner, it's like, that there's specific conditions for special requirements, and...
I mean, my opinion is still that there are specific conditions, but in the original resolution.
No, I'm sorry, if anyone can keep it down, we're not going to get this on record.
If the applicant is positioned that they at this point want to go a different direction from what those conditions that were originally approved, I, my personal opinion is that that needs to be done by an official action, we can't, I mean, but I just don't, that's a material change.
Are you fully in my position? Just wanted to make sure.
Well, it certainly will be a material change with respect to that approval, so the applicant will withdraw that approval, and we don't have that approval anymore, and, and we were asking for a site plan exemption, which the board can grant.
How do you withdraw a previously approved exemption?
You submit a letter saying you're withdrawing.
I would imagine it would be almost required, if you're approving a footprint for something else in place of what you had previously approved, it really should be part of the resolution combined, and withdraw that previous approval.
New approvals, less than percent of the original, etc.
The applicant throwing you the towel.
That's not the applicant, that's not the applicant. The applicant is here, they're saying they'll come back with amended approval, but they'll come back, they're most likely to get...
Could they come back on, one second, please, they come back on current terms, would they notice? Or would you be in amended approval?
Not really, because Mr. Jackson has indicated the intention of correspondence, that it's not material change, and that those are not required.
So if you need notice, there's one act, it's not required.
This means you're taking formal action.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think it's an amended site plan, I think it could be done as correspondence. I agree, they probably should be noticed, because we are asking to remove two conditions, but there's the actual, it's not really an amended site plan.
But what they're not...
There was not notice, no, I told you, I, I found out about this, I found out about this, no, I did not notice.
If you're agreeing that, that we can't take action now, so work out the notice with the, with the office, and whatever.
Are there any other site changes that are proposed from the site plan amendments, besides the removal of the access?
It's making, it's actually, it's actually, the addition is actually going to be smaller than what was shown on the daycare, so I guess the answer is yes.
Okay, it's smaller, are there, is there additional infrastructure?
No.
Okay, the parking circulation, everything's the same?
Everything's the same, we're not adding the additional parking that was required on, because it was a daycare use which would have required.
I'm, I'm, Chairman, I'm putting it out there, in lieu of a, a site plan amendment, can they do a correspondence request and notice for the wait?
That, that would be my recommendation. My recommendation would be it's a correspondence request, but there should be notice because of the waiver of the improvement of Vermont Avenue, which, to be fair, should be noticed.
And maybe you can testify as to what the rationale is, and the board, and possibly the public, could have imposed that.
So if it's worked out between John and Terry, or...
Yes.
I was just about to say, I'm go, I'll double check with John about that, I'm sure we can work it out, but regardless, I...
You get a good change that the exception of the road that was originally required now there's a need.
Well, you can change it to the daycare as parking requirement, but you can't change one use for another where you don't need the parking.
But I thought you mean the parking requirements would be approved you already had, and you're not proposing to change anything that was previously approved except you use the building differently, so all that to your parking, theoretically would be there.
That was my question, are you, do you want to do anything other than?
We're not, we're leaving the existing facilities that they are putting in gym to meet that quality as a site plan exemption.
It does, and it should not be before this board, the way it was explained to me is that if you have an approval, and rather than building a building and using it for daycare, you're going to build that building and need approval and use it for gym instead. That to me sounded like a correspondence request, it's no longer sounding like a correspondence request.
Yeah, is anything other than that, I don't think it is either. Is it something other than that?
Well, it's that, but they don't want to put in the improvements, they don't need the additional parking, there's no need for additional parking and there's no need to approve the roadways. Otherwise, it's that. It is really that, it is really that delete that they're going to change from being a daycare to being a gym, in other words, being part of the school building. Therefore, there's no new parking requirements because it's the same students that are using the gym, there's no new staff requirements, there's nothing being changed by it. So there's no reason to have to put in the parking and there's no reason to have to put in the improvements with the road. That is the reason that if you believe it could be done as a correspondence matter, but mind you, I found out I was handling this about ten minutes before this meeting, so.
My only question is if it has to be noticed, I might agree that it comes to correspondence, but could be into a restriction that we take notice.
Site plan exemptions are known as when you change the residential or non-residential. The section of the ordinance eighteen hit six oh one, exceptions to application requirements. And so if the applicant's claiming them is right, but because including conditions pertaining to the subject are partial, the little enforcement of this section is attractive. And will that some new enforcement claim for may permit such exemptions as may be reasonable within the general purpose and the passage of the law. I think this fits that maybe we need, grab my notice to testify, they explain to you the situation. And I apologize, I got a lot more notice than, than nearly, I had now. But if I had submitted this, I would have submitted a site plan exemption, which would let us.
One second, Mr. President.
And we would give this as approval, so there's no extra, no new requirements. What can you put in this resolution, or what can you provide this board? That if, if everything's changed to, to, to anything by the gym, it comes back.
You can put exactly that in the resolution, we have no problem with that. That as long as it's only being used as a gym, so that there were no new students being, and no new, there's no new traffic, I guess I should say, there's no new traffic, there's no new staff requirements on account of it.
Mr. Renner, unfortunately, typically because correspondence item is not considered formal action, and is not considered a material change, there is no resolution from this action. I simply stated, like I said, four degrees, this is not a material change and does not need their action. So if it's going to be taking action, typically that indicates that an amended approval, some kind of notification is required, specifically in light of the fact that a waiver is required from approving on the plate.
Well, the board could, uh, perhaps a resolution granting a site plan exemption, and then, uh, the attorney's office could prepare a resolution that found these conditions. Or is that a motion to approve a site plan exemption? And a site plan exemption, since you're not doing a site plan, you're not required to do the other improvement, and, and you have conditions in there, so that if anything more than the gym comes in, they have to do the site plan and they have to do all the improvements required for you.
That's why I actually want to come for as long as, as most people, I don't know, I forgot the whole gathering.
Is it legal or not to, without a notice?
Mr. Clowder, do you want to give a challenge in this section of the ordinance you're referencing, if you're related with it, if it's about special circumstances where the board can grant a site plan exemption?
It's eighteen six oh one.
Typically, an addition unless, typically, an addition unless you have fifteen per square feet is not required in here, I believe that. Applied in this case, but I'm not sure why they brought it for you.
Addition, is it an addition?
Well, an addition to existing site.
The only thing is, we have a motion that our board made.
Well, essentially, they're abandoning the previous approval and even direct an exemption. If they were to do that, then they're not requesting a waiver from the grantee who's issued the previous approval.
What does it take to have a, 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 a?
They could submit a formal withdrawal if that is a little board, if they might.
Please be quiet in the audience.
Yeah, I understand, Mr. Renner, it's like, that there's specific conditions for special requirements changes. I mean, my opinion is still that there are specific conditions, but in the original resolution.
Yeah, my, I'm sorry, everyone keep it down, we're not going to get into this one record.
If it's the applicant position that they at this point want to go a different direction from what those conditions that were originally approved, I, my personal opinion is that that needs to be done by an official action, we can't, I just don't, that's a material change.
Can you pull this one up? Just wanted to make sure.
Well, yeah, it certainly will be a material change with respect to that approval. So if the applicant withdraws that approval, and we don't have that approval anymore, uh, and, and we were asking for a site plan exemption, which the board can grant.
How did you withdraw, I don't know, previously approved, uh, extension?
Did you submit a letter saying you would withdraw?
I would imagine it would be almost required, if you're approving a footprint for something else in place of what you had previously approved, it really should be part of the resolution combined, that withdraw after you've approved.
New approvals last hundred percent of the original.
The applicant throwing you the towel.
That's not, that's the bill, that's, that's not the applicant, that's not the applicant. The applicant is here, they're saying they'll come back with an amended approval, but they'll come back, they won't sign it yet.
Could they come back on, one second please, they come back on correspondence, would they notice? Or would you be an amended approval?
No, really, because Mr. Clowder is indicating the extension correspondence, that it's not material change and that those are not required.
So if you need notice, there's one act, it's not before.
This means you're taking formal action.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think it's an amended site plan, I think it could be done as correspondence, I agree that probably should be noticed because we are asking to remove two conditions, but there's the actual, it's not really an amended site plan.
What did it not notice?
There was not notice, no, I told you, I found out about this, I found out about this, no, it did not notice.
Shh.
If you're agreeing that, that we can't take action now, so work out the notice with the, with the office, and whatever.
Questions, Chair Terry? Are there any other site changes that are proposed from the site plan amendments besides the removal of the access?
It's making, it's actually, it's actually, the addition is actually going to be smaller than what was shown on the daycare, so I guess the answer is yes.
Okay, it's smaller, are there, is there additional infrastructure?
No.
Okay, the parking circulation, everything's the same.
Everything's the same, we're not adding the additional parking that was required on, because it was a daycare use which would have required.
I'm, I'm, Chair Terry, I'm putting it out there, in lieu of a, a site plan amendment, can they do a correspondence request and notice for the weight?
That, that would be my recommendation, my recommendation would be it's a correspondence request, but there should be notice because of the waiver of the improvement of Vermont Avenue, which, to be fair, should be.
Testify as to what the rationale is, and board and possibly the public could have approached that.
So can someone work that with John, Terry?
Yes.
I was just about to say, I'm, I'll double check with John about that, I'm sure we can work it out, but regardless, I think for tonight.
Okay.
Do you want to move the hell out of tonight?
Florida is that one.
Okay, let's go on.
Uh, goodness, correspondence request is SB nineteen thirty-four for congregation to Paris every.
Shh, please be quiet in the audience. Terry, do you have anything on the next correspondence?
I'm just looking at it, Chair, and I'm sure with Will, your testimony, for sure, my understanding is that indicated on the request form, uh, they're going to finish off, you know, finish out the space that happened about the opening sanctuary, um, for women worshipers. Well, uh, did you, you know, if you are aware, Chair, uh, to park, if you are, and sort of base it upon, it's a main sanctuary, so it wouldn't have no change.
Good evening, sorry, good evening, Chair, I'm just, just to be clear, they want to finish off the Mesenian section for, as the data very indicated, for the women's space. No additional modifications, changing the main sanctuary space, is this solely going to be used, um, for women, uh, when they come, uh, for services?
No, not changing anything.
No, it is totally, we care originally, that we were, like, it was supposed to be main sanctuary space, not, not Mesenian, just the women's, uh, area. It's dropped now.
Originally, we all have.
This was, like, this was a previous approval, now this coming in, um.
Typically, typically, something like this would go to the, the living apartment, just for permits to finish all unfinished space. This resolution happened to reference that it is testimony of the original approval, there was a reference to the fact that it wasn't added, but it was unfinished. So the zoning officer was just a little hesitant on whether or not the specific conditions were issued.
I think we're at, about one thirty, four or five minutes.
How many parking buttons they have, how many do we require?
Uh, he. The main synagogue, the main has four feet, so no parking required.
No parking required?
And you provided one, two, three, four, and I can't tell who's over on the side, it's like just three, three parking spaces.
Where's, how, what's Australia? I'm paying you, Phil, do you, are you, it says new symbol.
It's really original, weird, not, weird, it's.
It says new symbol, but that, uh.
Sir, you're going to.
That was the original plan, that was submitted, the only thing we're coming to the board this evening is the Mesenian attic space, uh, finished at approximately four hours per feet off. Nothing to do, not, all the other plans that were submitted, or not all the other, the previous ones, that did not get changed. The only work coming for, uh, the board tonight is for the, is the attic area we finished off, um, so Mesenian space for, for women to help the. What is that doing, popping out? Okay, the existing attic, we're finished. Nonadditional interior space, finished off the attic. Here's the building top, the building top, it's been used the last five years.
Sir, if you're going to testify me to swear, should we do that? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony or velocity of the board will be the truth, the whole truth, is nothing but the truth? What's your name, I address?
That was the eyes of three men, it's cool, ladies.
Thank you.
Where does everybody pop right now?
Where?
Where does everybody pop right now?
We actually, uh, I, I.
Analysts only three boxes.
I built the whole building next door, it's forty plus spots, and we, basically, all this is ours, we own things.
We have the show.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's why we, that's how we set it up.
So technically, they don't have any bearings from the apartments, nevermind.
They don't, they don't.
No parking required, they, the main sanctuary, the Mesenian sanctuary, no parking required, both of them. Still not adding completion.
This is once we split the rules.
So do it again. Now, about four hours short, it's, you can add it totally again, no additional, uh, cars coming to the space.
To be used, to leave it.
Well, it's, it's, it's only not shared, see?
The main areas in the space.
Any questions, any board members? Um, it sort of says new symbol, we have to, need it clearly, that it's no symbol, is there a symbol now? Please note, it's unfinished basement?
I don't even think we have a tension.
It just says it.
Those, that, that, that submitted too long, it's not on.
They were, those were provided by the.
Those were provided, those were the, a previous plan that was submitted along the original proof, that's what.
This was done on, on, on July of last year, this was, this application was approved a couple of years ago. So this was done in July, seven, nine, eight.
The only possibility, the only possibility is for the, has anything.
We make a motion, I don't know if we must make a motion, strictly for the Mesenian, and, and the hall, if you ever want to use a hall, you have to come back to the board.
If you ever make a call, you want to come, you have to come back to the board.
The hall's a part of the original, we don't have that, so. It's approved, we just haven't, we never, we never touched it. The only issue, the only thing that previous resolution had is the Mes, the Mesenian issue, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Just curious, why wasn't it approved initially?
What, the thing, we, we have, we have an addition right now in the press floor, but then, there's more, uh, more, more in need, well, actually, there's, okay, well, whatever.
What's going to happen with that room now?
Uh, it's a school, it's a, it's a library, the library, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I will ask for a motion. And Isaacson move, Mr. Meyer seconds, round call please.
Mr. Quintero.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett. Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clowder, gentlemen.
SD twenty sixty-seven is an extension of a minor subdivision, report on the case.
Anybody here on that, on the extension?
Mr. Moskowitz, your name?
State your name, and you have to be a.
I have a key away from Mr. Moskowitz, he's the applicant.
Uh, sir, what is your name?
What is that people's name?
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony or velocity of the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please, uh, state your name first of all, the record.
M O R D E C H A L I N equals N F I M K E L S D I M.
Okay, and then, you can show the, the, the turn to make sure. Julian, proud attorneys allow to let via application?
Uh, yes, I don't see the issue, but, fine, we should take a picture of this, I would like to.
Or does this, or, 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 or? Okay, so, Mr. Sable, so. Okay, this you see?
I'm new here for an extension, of the, um, was approved.
Okay, well, then, what are you, the extension, how old are you?
Mr. Herzl, two, one year, you said.
Yes, please.
Um, yeah, I was just about to say, um, sir, if you could please explain to the board, uh, you know, why the developer has been barred or prevented from moving forward with the original application?
We have to, with the county and with the senate, that we, uh, saw, so, a vote of all, it's a great, but we go for a song, it's a.
Okay, we have a motion to grant, uh, two, one year on extension.
Mr. Reddick, don't, don't disappoint the, 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 she, she doesn't. I'm sorry, she, she, I'm sorry, was, was, why?
It's a county road, and we had a back and forth with the county that took time, as well as a sanitary sewer plant that we needed to expand this.
Minor subdivisions, from the date of minor subdivision is approved, the applicant has a period of one hundred and ninety days to finalize that map, that is signed by all FID agencies. It's filed with the county agreement, they can't have one hundred and ninety days deadline, it expires and finalizes.
And they allow us for two, one year.
Of two, two, one year extensions.
What happens when you have that?
Uh, they need to file a new application, correct.
We have a motion to grant an extension. Yes, Mr. Van Fess, uh, motion, we have a second. Mr. Sable, second, round call.
Mr. Quintero. Mr. Sable. Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer. Mr. Isaacson.
I have stand as well.
And Mr. Meyer. Can we take action if we have a extension to the three votes, for, for, yes?
Um.
Or do we need five seconds?
The extension goes.
Who's a tie? Who's a tie?
Well, it's just a tie for extension, it wasn't a tie.
I know, I'm, I'm not an attorney.
Okay. The three yeses with the extension.
Oh, that, the, the majority is the yeses, if, if the majority of the yeses and no's, the extension goes to the majority. I'm saying, right, go ahead, that's approved.
Okay.
Okay, so approved, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
SD twenty-two fifty-five is also an extension of a two lot subdivision, I'll prosecute you for accurate.
Uh, another minor subdivision, a hundred and ninety days, they, they don't get done, it's on a county road. If you give an extension, actually, all this, now, you can see every minor subdivision, who asked for extension, this one is the same thing, we're asking for two, one year extension.
If, if the county road takes more than a hundred and ninety days.
They should change the municipal, municipal land use law, it's done in nineteen sixty, and they didn't know that the county, uh, it takes longer than a hundred and ninety days.
What, what's the new, should take, go through the county?
Uh, a minor subdivision, you can get them done in eight or nine months, uh, usually within a year they're done.
A hundred and ninety days is enough, or?
Hundred and ninety days, no.
Okay.
You're looking again for two, one year extension?
Yes.
Oh, you're allowing partial?
Absolutely, you grant only one year.
If you want to, if you want to grant just one year extension, that's fine, this is.
Because it's a big application, it's in processing, only closing to approve, one year.
We, Mr. Sable moves one year extension, do we have a second?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Meyer, second, round call.
Mr. Quintero.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Renner. Mr. Isaacson.
I have a statement.
Mr. Meyer. Thank you. Uh, I just want to remind everyone, including, uh, us, and Sables and the day, to keep aside conversations to a minimum, because it makes it impossible to be able to hear the people on record. Thank you. SD twenty-three eighteen is another extension of a minor subdivision, it's created in five months, but it's out of five, so it's really just a realignment, I want to say.
Hi, good evening, um, on this one, we need flat hazard area permits, if you know anything about getting FHA permits, they certainly cannot be done in a hundred and ninety days for a minor subdivision. Um, actually, we need four FHA room permits, I believe we have two of them already, but, um, in any event, that would certainly ask for at least one year, at least one, one year extension, um, to get the flat hazard area permits. Uh, there's also wetlands on this site, and there's wetland permits, uh, which is the reason this couldn't possibly have been done in a hundred and ninety days allotted to it.
When was this approved, is there an extension?
No, this is the first time.
This was approved most recently, because you can tell, uh, the ones we're looking at, that's twenty-three eighteen, twenty-three is the later number, but I believe it did just maybe recently expire.
Correct.
So it would have been about six months.
About six months, no.
We have a motion to grant a one year extension. I'll make a motion, to grant them one year extension, do we have a second? Mr. Meyer, second, round call.
Mr. Quintero.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
I understand.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson, do you stand?
Yes. Yes, I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Thank you.
There's also a tie, uh, hopefully it's a little bit.
The next is SB twenty-seventy-eight, which is an extension of a site plan, so this one's a little different, uh, for Park Lane Associates, which is, I believe, the after-topic building.
Good evening, uh, my name is Evans Herman, attorney for the applicant, uh, if you all from, if you're down, how, and Z, so, correct, this is an application for an extension of site plan approval. In twenty-fourteen, it's for granted, amended, final, site plan approval, we asked for twelve facility, we're asking for a five year extension, uh, primarily based on the fact that we have yet to obtain CAPR approval. I understand that the latest MGP P bulletin puts the township's, uh, center designation on the agenda for March sixth, so we're expecting CAPR approval issue and rest of resolution compliance to happen after.
Asking for five years?
It would be retroactive to the, to the two year date, uh, in twenty eighteen, so if granted by this board tonight, the extension would go to October twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Why do you five years?
At this point, we still don't have CAPR approval, so it'll go through twenty twenty-one, so it's only a year, year and a half for that.
He only asked me two years. Do you reckon it's longer, try?
Less than two years.
And the extensions for site plans are typically longer, because they do take a lot, longer to install.
And we can grant them for five years?
Yeah.
I, I, one, one caveat, if I may, he had requested five years in our original letter submission, the municipal land use law requires that you would have to notice for an extension of five years, so we had asked that, uh, the extension be approved in four years, three hundred and sixty-four days.
Why would that not prove it, not save the console?
The plan was approved at an impervious coverage ratio of just under eighty percent, and I understand that since the plan designation process has not been completed, that if we apply today, we can grant the CAPR approval. But once the center designation is complete, uh, we expect CAPR approval.
According to the ordinance, the planning board may extend a period of protection for a major site plan of one year, but not to exceed three extensions. So I, that means five years.
The municipal land use law only references three, are you familiar with that?
Correct, that, the size of this project is over two hundred thousand square feet, so under section fifty-two, uh, fifty-two B in municipal land use law, the board is entitled, or it's our opinion, the board's entitled to grant an extension for such period of time as, uh, I'll read you what it says, such additional period of time as shall be determined by the planning board to be reasonable, taking into consideration, one, the number of dwelling units and non-residential floor area permissible under the final approval, two, the number of dwelling units and non-residential floor area remaining to be developed, three, economic conditions, and four, the comprehensiveness of the development.
I would think if, if, if maybe, um, information was to the board to know that, um, a lot of times with site plan approvals, what they, what they do is offer a protection and zoning changes and within changes for a certain period of time. Um, once that time period has expired, the site plan approval is still valid, they can still be rightfully constructed, but if the zoning has changed, they've lost their protection against those zoning changes. So parking requirements increase, then they need to meet the requirements. Um, I'm not familiar with any zoning changes in that area that would affect this approval, so I don't know that the board is really giving them anything that is, is out of the realm of.
I guess, I, I didn't talk on the last three, because I didn't vote on it, I've seen on the, I, I'd like to see what was proved, I have no idea what I'm.
There should be a copy of the site plan attached that board wants to question about, it's in your plans, huh?
What was it?
The whole extension to your plans, huh?
If I can add, just one, one item, there was, in the zoning, they had required it for six hundred and twelve parking spots, and they requested a waiver because they're giving only three hundred and three, that's more than fifty percent. They got a waiver for three hundred parking spots, initially, in two thousand and fourteen. As well as sidewalks on New Hampshire, that's from the notes. Correct, that, that was the only hearing granted by the board, uh, the site plan amendment was also for addition to the facility, it was previously a hundred and twelve thousand, approximately square feet, they're adding a hundred and twenty-two. It was previously a hundred and twelve thousand, approximately square feet, they're adding a hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet to the building. Twelve square footage of approximately two hundred and thirty-five thousand square.
Did they agree to add parking requirements?
They did get it, fine. Correct, there's a hearing screen.
So will that, it was hard.
Is it, is it, is it worse today? For the place of parking?
Not that way.
Was it the same, would be the same.
I don't know, but different in parking requirements for warehouse, which I, is what I assume is moving the land use for manufacturing.
Mr. Julio, what's, what do you recommend, what's the most we can grant?
Well, I stand corrected, counsel did mention this subsection B, which does state that, uh, for projects of this size, the board can grant, uh, more than three years, uh, to whatever the board feels is reasonable considering the circumstances.
Any questions? We have two more. Do you have any questions, any more? Aside from where the other sections are, are.
And sidewalk.
Do you think that it can, can help me to take action on that?
Right, the extension is, it's just that, it's an extension of the prior approval, so there's really no changes to that prior approval. It's just extending the protection here.
The board, the board certainly did deny it, and then that would leave the applicant with the option of either figuring out the existing approval stands with the current zoning standards, or if they need to reapply and.
I mean, I can hear testimony, why they don't need the parking also, I'm not saying, I don't care why, yes.
But what's five years?
So in the, uh, in the materials that we submitted to the board, attached to the resolution was a copy of the end hearing review letter that was issued at that time. The testimony in front of the board was that the facility operates without parking deficiency and will continue to operate without parking deficiency, given the expansion of the building. Uh, to manufacture and use, the parking demand is therefore lighter, uh, in actuality than what the ordinance had required, and that was our testimony. Uh, the board found at that time, there ended three parking spaces with that, but there wouldn't be an issue with parking. I understand that if we went to move forward with the plan today, uh, it would, like Alice said, it would be permitted because there hasn't been any changes in the zoning. But this is a request to extend that period of protections, which expired in twenty-sixty.
You said that you can cap it, right?
Correct.
Exactly, you can cap it, it's a day, no more.
We've been working with CAPR, uh, in anticipation of the center designation happening. So I understand that CAPR is satisfied with our plan revision to this point, and once the center designation is approved, we expect the CAPR permit issued.
These, a lot of things have changed since two thousand and fourteen, I moved to like.
My other question is that they have the approval, they ask for the most. Not granting, not granting any warrants.
If they were to come in for this application.
Chairman, I, I do recall this, this application, we have to talk about it, we're going to talk about it. Um, and I, if you look at the plans they submitted, um, they even show indoor property application, they're not, we are not required for once, we consider it a special use. So they are even providing some different acting than what was required. I mean, they're based off of the number of employees, and if that number is not realistic for them, I, I can see where we argue with the board for that. I don't remember exactly what was said.
Do you know, do you know if it was granted in Florida?
I don't. Didn't like the, in, in one of your two letters, I don't know what I was talking about.
I don't, I just don't know, is there a hundred places and just two hundred extra spaces? Is there three-inch places, three-inch stuff, is it a, and now we're not with the, the testimony. They only put their use, their use in the. So, actually, can we make a motion that they can't sell that in anybody else, with only basically having of.
I'm sorry, Chairman, what was your question?
We make a motion that we will extend that, that only they can't sell that in anybody else, has to be that I don't use. With their personal consent, there you go.
Yeah, I, I. I, yeah, I think this is strictly an application for, uh, extension, and we can't really build on the.
Working two thousand and nineteen before.
So, Julio, questions for your board to tell me? If they're coming for an extension, we feel the division's. We feel the sidewalks, we need sidewalks, we need more parking. So we make any, add anything on today?
I don't believe so, Chairman. Like Elliot mentioned, you can decide to deny the.
What happens, you don't want to do extension, what happens?
Okay. That's a new application.
Um, oftentimes, the board looks at things like conforming applications, where the board's told that they don't have to write wire to an applicant or something, but sometimes the applicant will offer that as a duty, which is great. And if the applicant, where it indicates that they wanted to do something such as provide sidewalks to allay the board's concerns, would they be able to accept that in the extension?
That could certainly be captured to the extension, and, I mean, we do go over the testimony that was put forth at the, uh, at the hearings, that we deserve to be.
My, my only, my only concern with sidewalks, uh, is not knowing whether it's going to have an impact on the CAPR permit that we're seeking by adding additional impervious to the site. I don't know that, standing right here. So, to, to answer, I think it was your question as to what would happen in the event that he didn't approve the extension tonight, as long as there haven't been any changes to the zoning, the approval's still valid, so our client would be able to proceed with the CAPR permit and apply. But in the event that, uh, something changes in the town, there's a revision to the M1 zone to prohibit the manufacturing use or otherwise, then we'd be in a situation where we need to come back to the board. Um, considering the comprehensiveness, uh, comprehensiveness of this development, it's another hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet, and the amount of time and effort that the applicant is spending trying to get through DUP, um, we're asking for another year and a half to October twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, in the event that we weren't able to complete the project by that time, we'd have to come back and, and request another extension.
Chairman, I mean, let's just understand the requirement for an extension. Obviously, whoever, I mean, Brian, I think, said before that the ordinance was created in nineteen sixty, when it was easy, he got things done, things done in ninety days. But if there's a reason you need to come for an extension, and there's a reason why he's taking CAPR so long to approve it, this, this has got to be an issue. He said the CAPR, so these guys are not, they're waiting for a change in CAPR.
Correct. I think that speaks volumes.
I, I don't think we would, we would either say that.
I mean, the fact that the extension is not automatic, if you need to come back in front of the board to ask for an extension, it would indicate that the board should take action, because things change. And I, I think things have certainly changed, so. I, I personally don't feel comfortable voting at all on this, I think this needs more time to, uh, to be studied and understood, the impact of, of the going to the extension.
What would it take for the applicant to reduce the size of the building?
The building's built. The thing, though, is built, right, no?
The building's built, so this, this is just for an expansion to the buildings. The building, as it exists right now, is about a hundred and twenty-two thousand, if you add it.
I'm referring to the addition.
So the addition's not built.
Can we reduce the size of it, so we can add a little more parking, make it compromise?
I mean, that, that would be, you know, we have just, that's a new application. Um, so just, we're asking for tonight, it's just an extension of that, that period of protections.
I'm not sure if your, where was going on, like, with the parking and the sidewalks and everything, this, this is serious stuff.
I understand, and I don't have a traffic expert with me tonight, um, but if the, if the board would prefer, I can, I can come back, make some traffic testimony.
That's what I was going to say.
And take traffic testimony, Mr. Chairman. I, I'd like to hear this moment, for the applicants, oh, what, you mean, the three-inch spaces, how many people work there? What's going on, how many, how many more employees are you hiring to do the show space? I, I, I feel that we have inadequate information to move forward with the, with the vote tonight, that's my thing.
Mr. Hertzler, I think officially, um, where we'll take action, we should open the public gates, and then we'll get the public here and we'll have to see.
Not taking any action.
Well, I think, are you even happy?
Yeah. I think so. I hear from the board, I hear from the board, they're asking for more information, I have traffic expert, what have the applicant, say, the space needs. So I don't think we're. Mr. Chairman, I don't think.
That would, we would request that you grant a legal of the board's requirements to act in the same timeframe. Um, our, our next meeting is fifth, this is only an extension, we do have quite a few applications out there, a large application, March nineteenth, because there are other applications that.
Would you be ready for March nineteenth? To have the traffic engineer, what, what are you doing?
If I might pull the word real quick, just to find out what, if any other issues there might be, I haven't seen traffic, are the employees of the site.
If you ask me, uh, what is very strict about sidewalks, about, uh, parking spaces, Lakewood, four years ago today, five years ago, five years ago, there's a big difference. I don't have traffic, well, the applicant should test why they use them more. Okay, so is March nineteenth the date of our session? Yes, we have a motion.
Yeah, and Mr. Sable, second.
Mr. Quinteros. Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler.
Yes.
Mr. Rettles. Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, just review all the waivers, and we'll go over.
Thank you. Julio, do you want to announce it? Let, uh.
Yes, um, members of the public, please advise that application number SP two oh seven eighty, Park Lane Associates, is hereby adjourned to the March nineteenth meeting, and there will be no further announcements. Or notice.
Okay, thank you.
Next application is, I'm sorry, um, I, I did mention to the chairman, I don't know if we have an interest in moving anything around. We do have a fully performing minor subdivision scheduled after this school, leave the law and knock that out of the way.
I'd rather do the school first, because there's a lot of parents.
SP twenty-three oh eight, Reesheva Torres Menachum is a major site plan for addition to a school on Sparkport Avenue. Um, the board did start to consider this application at a previous meeting, but not with the notice, so the applicant must provide a new notice, and will be resorted in this application. Thank you.
Here is the last, the chairman's understanding that the application, the original zoning and the submission waivers, uh, were made part of the meeting, and we're not going to miss that.
No, I don't, the board, I don't think did anything, because we have a jurisdictional issue with the notice.
All right, I'm going to start then, there are two letters, uh, first is required to be new dated January tenth, and, uh.
There's a February one, I'm sorry.
Well, the February, no, the February eleventh.
Is not applying to Jan, yes, to the January.
The January tenth.
The January tenth is the main one, that talks about something. Uh, under submission waivers, there were only two, uh, proposed submission, uh, towards the county planning, and the applicant indicated, uh, that they could file a piece of the traffic report. Uh, which had been done, and the second is the I S, uh, words for.
We have a motion, a moment, translations, the translator. Look, who's the sample favor, I.
And then on the seventy, uh, parcel, it isn't that one, that was a district, uh, there's a pre-existing non-conforming front yard setback. Um, if the department is under forty feet, uh, the industrial commission can reduce that significantly. The existing non-conforming front yard setback, uh, is under fifty-four point five feet or fifty-four point six feet, depending upon the stock's background. Board will hear that as part of the application. Upper relief is also required, um, from non-residential uses of the district. Uh, relief is also required of providing, uh, ten foot line, nice to be gone. Now that was our technical review, there was a supplemental review dated February eleventh, uh, just upon the supplemental access and, and traffic review. I'm not going to read it to the record, Chairman, but, but we heard about.
Have any things, any comments on the February eleventh?
The comments in there are based upon the review, um, we recommend testimony, uh, which relates to the circulation angle of the site plan. Uh, as indicated, the site design, you have six acts of points, three are proposed to be one-way in, and three are proposed to be one-way out. Uh, there's one sheet in the plan, so I gave this sheet fifty, which shows the plus circulation, but it also shows signage, many intent, with our design segments. Um, we're going to be tested on both, uh, from Mr. Flannery and Mr. Rettles as well. Um, there will be questions in the hearing as to how those forms of function.
Thank you so much, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mary Ann White, seen on behalf of the applicant, Reesheva Torres Menachum. Um, just to refresh everybody's memory, or some of you weren't here last month, but yes, we did, uh, get up to the podium last time, and then we realized that we had a jurisdictional issue, uh, just as the board members may be aware. There is a portion of the property that's owned by the school, and then there's a portion that is, that is being leased from the industrial commission upon which parking and some playgrounds, um, equipment will be located. The notices had only been sent last month on the parcel, on the lot that the school owns, and we didn't send notices with, within two hundred feet from the parcel that's being leased from the industrial commission, and that is the reason that we're starting from scratch tonight. We have now sent all new notices to all the neighbors, um, and that would be two hundred feet within both of those lots. Um, Torres Menachum is one of Lakewood's fastest-growing boys' elementary schools. I certainly would ask that, um, whoever's here in the audience, we have many, many parents, just raise your hand if you're here in support of this application. Just so you get some idea, I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for not tabling this one, because as you, as you were correct, uh, we do have many parents that are here to show their support this evening. Um, Torres Menachum currently has four hundred and ninety-four students, um, in, from, from first through eighth grades. They have one seventh grade, they have one eighth grade, and then they have parallel classes all the way down in the older grades. Actually, with three classes per level in primary through second grade. So as you see, as, as in most of the schools in Lakewood, the older grades, the, the older grades have one class, and then as, as, as we get, uh, into the lower grades, there are just more and more parallel classes, and hence the reason that we are before you requesting an addition. Um, just to give you a, a small perspective, they received two hundred and thirty-two applications just for next year's incoming primary class, sixty of whom are siblings. So, um, this is for a proposed two-story addition to the northeast corner of the existing school, um, including a hall in the basement. After the addition, there will be a total of thirty-six classrooms, twenty-seven in the new part, and nine in the old part, as well as parking, a playground, and a pool. There will be a total of three hundred sixteen parking spaces, so there will be a lot of parking, uh, for this school. The only barriers we leave being sought is for a pre-existing non-conforming front yard setback, as Chairman had indicated earlier, for the existing building, and for better relief, as is typical with virtually all the school applications that come before this board. All children are bused to school, except for the occasional student who misses a bus or has a doctor's appointment. Um, with that, I think I'm going to ask that we call our first witness, which is Louis Bryan Flannery, as soon as he stops talking. Brian, ready to get to one?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to the board will be the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey license, professional engineer, professional planner. I have a proof of evidence of A1, is a copy of the existing site, it blue is where the school is, the parking area in the trailer. A2 is an aerial showing the, uh, existing school, uh, and the, the joint properties. A3, indicated in orange, is the current property outline, it blue is the same school, and pink is the. A three, indicated in orange, is the current property outline, the blue is the same school, and pink is the proposed addition, uh, to the, um, the, the left side of the site is the area that's being leased for the proposed parking lot and pool and recreation area going. Uh, A four is a tax map that just shows the other lots of the area, I have to flip this tax map over, because new lines like to do their planning with north arrow, north arrow pointing down, so they're all in the same orientation, and then we have, uh, renderings of the, uh, proposed facility from several of them. So, a, as, as has been indicated, the only variance relief that we're asking for is the pre-existing front yard setback, you can see where the existing school, the corner of that school, uh, is, uh, less than a hundred forty feet from the existing roadway. Uh, the new addition that's come back is the high net, so, uh, we're not increasing any on the formality, uh, we have, uh, thirty feet to what would be the east, uh, and, and then, because we've added the lease area, on the other side, there's, uh, well over a hundred feet, uh, in the other direction, the proposed addition. The, uh, the parking that's proposed in the, uh, in the territory report, he asks for a capulation of parking, and the ordinance says we will not exchange, where it now requires three, uh, classroom, and we calculated his, all of the existing and proposed classrooms, and, and they were calculated correctly on the plan. Some of the parking calculations associated with that were a little difficult to follow, but there'll be a total of forty-five classrooms, if you do three per classroom, that's a hundred thirty-five required for them. Uh, meeting rooms, uh, there's, there will be a total of three, we're also going to count that, because it, and the ordinance said for any area over six hundred fifteen square feet, so we multiply that by three also, that gives us six. He's got, uh, thirty-eight total office spaces, so it's one per office, uh, three libraries, multiply by three is nine for that, uh, the tutor spaces, which are less than six hundred twenty-five, we've allowed one space for each of the twenty-four of them, and then seventy-one for the wedding hall, according to the ordinance, for a total required of two hundred eighty-three, and we have two hundred ninety-eight available.
The wedding hall doesn't need one seventy-one?
Maybe for second wedding, right? Well, the, uh, M one ordinance, uh, has a provision for parking for all of the uses listed, the halls aren't listed in, in any of them, so, uh, it, it, but restaurants are listed, and, and restaurants, it says, one for four hundred square feet, we use one for two hundred square feet, we come up with a seventy-one, and, and obviously, we, we know that you actually have a wedding when the school is going. I think if you look at other, uh, schools, uh, that have wedding halls, this certainly provides, uh, more parking than they do.
Brian, did you do the lead matter?
Uh, no, I did not.
What's the pass?
Uh, I think they should go.
Is it still over?
Yeah.
How many spots?
Uh, I don't remember, but it's, it's similar, it's, it's similar inside.
Brian, what's the size of the pass field of all, how many people do you have?
It's a little bit, it's, it's, it's a drop smaller than Bay Stova, but that was, he must, right, than he must have had, was what that was.
The drop is a little bit bigger than that.
Brian, I have not seen all yet, later, that has added a bump.
And, uh, I, I've been to Bay Stova, uh, a couple, uh, occasions, I was to the prior chairman's, uh, two hundred square area, and, and there was sufficient parking when I was there, uh...
Brian, people do get an example of this, okay?
Can you compare it to here, this least terrace, as far as this working out?
I suspect that as far as Lake Harrison, this is a little bit smaller, I believe. It's a little bit smaller.
So, it's two hundred ninety-eight, but today, it's American, four thirty-six feet. And then there's now, we're going to say it's three twenty-six.
The school did go back to the industrial commission.
It's part of the industrial commission, without the grant, as I said.
The industrial commission is willing to work with the school in any capacity that they can, if their meeting, I believe, later this week, and we will certainly, we will certainly, tomorrow, I think, right, we will certainly try against the industrial commission to give more space, um...
Honestly, two ninety-eight is the push to the road.
I counted two ninety-five.
And Terry, you said something?
Then I take it back, I just asked, the applicant did speak to the industrial commission, but now is that adding additional space?
Our assessment of Martin, chairman, we had one that, the architectural plans of parking capital, uh, as indicated in our January fifth report, we estimate, um, that for the architectural plans, two hundred seventy-three parking spaces were necessary, as per our review plans, uh, the eight spaces, uh, included seven eighty access spaces. That's our.
Chairman, with reference to your question about the industrial commission, the board does have copies that are emailed from Mr. Brian today, any behavior in the commission is in talks with the applicant about modifying for industrial terms of length of the lease, um, and the industrial commission indicated that meeting is carried tomorrow, whether they could also be reviewed, the revised plan should modify access into some one-way, one-way out to maybe that sort of...
I would also like to know if the commission would give them more space.
Buddy, uh, your board, uh, in here, as my study comes back, I hope it's a little because I multiplied by three each other of the roads. Uh, according to the ordinance, my capulation was two hundred eighty-three required, and two hundred ninety-eight proposed, and that's being concerned, I, I just stated, more than, if I was trying to strip, uh, I, I put it down, the wedding hall, almost four hundred, if the ordinance totally says, the question, I think, is one for four hundred.
You did one for two hundred.
I did one for two hundred, uh, and I, but I see three hundred parking spaces on that actual day's code, which is the only place where I've ever been invited to play, that I've gone to, and, and for. It was a very late question, yes, yes, uh, so, uh, uh, three hundred, three hundred parking spaces, uh, if, you know, you look at the size of the hall, three or four hundred people, if they're not all, not in one car, three hundred parking spaces, in my opinion, conforms with what the ordinance required, and, and, and will be sufficient. I, I know on the wedding hall that I turned it, I don't invite it to any, or all of it, it says there's going to be one.
How was the least terrace, I counted the parking spots, three hundred, three hundred and thirty parking spots, and it's cool, all the roads on the side is blocked.
That's not true, that, that depends, that, that depends on the...
We got to the hospital, you see?
That's right. It depends on the particular wedding, I think, I think, I think, most of the board members know that at Lakewood weddings, most attendees do not attend the whole wedding, because there is, there are a plethora of weddings, and every night, well, I don't think that's why, because every night, we all, we're all invited to about four weddings, so we don't attend the whole wedding, you know, we're a part of the wedding, so there's some people that come for the ceremony at the beginning, and there are some that come for the ceremony, there's some that come for the dinner, so, most, I think, I think you'd find that at, that at most of the weddings, the three hundred parking space, three hundred parking spaces will suffice, that's not to say, that's not, that's not to say that there won't be one wedding where there are, where it's not.
If the LSC could give more land and more hard face, would look your app, left...
The applicant would be amenable if the industrial commission would agree to give more land, I don't think that was discussed with the industrial commission, I know what I discussed with the industrial commission, and the only thing I discussed was the issue that was raised at the last hearing, which was that it was a ten-year term, and after the ten-year term, it was the option of the applicant to extend, to elect to extend the lease. I, I personally spoke to the industrial commission about changing, modifying that, so that it's a ninety-nine year term, but certainly a lengthier term, so that we don't have that issue, even though, in the, exist, at least the way it was going to be written, the, the option is clearly only exercisable by the applicant, and the industrial commission had no right to terminate it, similar to that. I still think to allay some of the board's concerns from the last hearing, that it would make sense to modify that, I've also discussed recording a memorandum of lease, so that it was recorded in the land records, which the industrial commission has no problem with. Those were the only parts I discussed with the industrial commission, I can ask the, I can call the applicant to testify, to tell you what he discussed, I don't know.
If the industrial commission will give more land, are you willing to...
Sorry, the question is...
Yes, the answer, the answer is yes, it will cost them more money, but yes, they will, is that the question, yes.
And a question with respect to parking, and, and if you're saying it would be very nice to have the parking places like Eric, my Steve colleague wrote up the size, they had eighteen thousand square feet, so this is two thirds of that, so if we followed the same parking, we would have two hundred, and we'd be short, we have three hundred, the same as they have, and, and we have, uh, sixty-five percent there of that, so...
Thank you, Mark.
Right, it's great, you know, as I understand, then, this land can be used for anything else, really besides your parking, right?
The, the land that's releasing from the industrial commission, no, it's just for parking.
I'm saying, I, it's my understanding, it can't be used for much else, right?
Correct.
Correct, you have, you have instructions built on it.
I, I...
It's all, it's, yes, it's...
I don't, I, you're saying they wouldn't be able to allow more parking?
No, of course, we haven't pressed the law.
No, not the actual Lakewood industrial commission, they wouldn't be, they have nothing else to do with it.
If, 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 if they agree with it, the applicant has no problem with it, I just wanted to make sure that the approval wouldn't, is that going to be conditioned upon us getting additional parking, because I don't know that that's feasible, that's...
I'm not going to agree on that, because, uh, as far as I know, they were concerned about additional, additional parking, they want to give more land.
If they're willing to give more land, the applicant does not have a problem, because again, what I, what I would request, the approval to not be conditioned upon the fact that we can get additional parking from the commission, okay, thank you.
Chairman, I want to make sure that the board saw the rest of the commission letter, which also references concerns about parking on the street, and specifically the placing, um, possibly the recommendation of the park property, the fence at the curb, those protect the students and to discourage long-street parking, um, as well as during the operation of the banquet hall, or days of banquet hall, it's going to be used at night, to, uh, put cones along the curb line to prevent parking by visitors because of the curb in the road there, just there are additional comments that the commission has that should be addressed.
And, and the applicant, the applicant will work with the industrial commission on what, yes, I did see that, but, uh, certainly, the applicant putting cones down the public road is problematic, if it's a public road, he doesn't have the authority to do that, but he will work with it.
Brian, what about a fence along the curb line, and what sort of waivers would the board need to write in that?
They say it has about twelve parking spaces, we're talking about three hundred, let's just put that into perspective, they say it's also a little, I mean, residential, right?
Yeah, and the difference with the state is, people can walk through the way, over here...
How many people walk to the way, and they're, they're getting your stop, it's, it's a little bit, little bit...
This is situated on a curve, and it's very dangerous, you cannot see what's going on, if you have cars parking on the road, we have to eliminate it, figure out a way...
But, and, and they, they can't, uh, they have the authority of the road, they get no parking, uh, on, on that road, and no parking signs around, and certainly, we can work and enforce that, and we can do whatever the, uh, needs, we know the industrial commission, however they announce the law, but we don't mind a plan or condition that says we have to put out cones or like they say it does, because they might not care about doing something they're not allowed to, this applicant would care about doing something. The, the applicant, uh, has a very good reputation, I, I've known the rabbi for many years, uh, I, I'm hoping everybody else has experienced it, and it's good at the time, uh, and, and he wants to have this one well whole, so, uh, he certainly would present a plan that except for the good recent impact, varying, and that offers, and, and offers to, particularly, presidential, we have offered better, uh, to the, to the, uh, providing fences, the same for the sale, we're hopeful that the board will approve the application, as it is, the applicant is indicating his willingness, uh, in good faith to go and, and make it better to the extent that he can, uh, but, we, we did get heard in the last meeting, we're here, we have plans, if he really wants to get moving forward on an application, then virtually, uh, so, the, the next question that, that is going to come up this sidewalk, uh, I, you've heard my testimony before, and I'm not going to make a lot of it, I, in my opinion, sidewalk in the industrial park is inappropriate, but if the board wants sidewalk, we would propose we would do a five-foot meandering asphalt path, I know at the last township committee, committee meeting, the committee men, um, were in favor of that, and, and the applicant will do that, and that's what the board wants. Uh, as far as fencing, certainly we're going to fence the side prop, property line, so nobody comes on or off the property where they're supposed to be, again, in the front, I don't think, uh, fencing is appropriate, uh, but, uh, and, and, and we certainly, uh, plan to, it's shiny, it's not consistent with, uh, um, the other, uh, uses in the area, but, again, personally, in my personal opinion, I think all schools should have something, the safety is...
All the way around the front?
Maybe we can get some, we're going to fund it tonight, some of the emergency funding, maybe we can get directed to Lakewood. Uh, and the applicant, with respect to fencing, there are funds that are available once the school is up, if the applicant is requesting that, and he fenciling the, uh, board require, that he be allowed to open the school and operate for a maximum of like two years in order to get the funding, so that, uh, the fencing can be provided with, uh, grant money rather than, uh, how the parents have to...
So, Brian, can, uh, will you agree that we will make the school up to, let's say, give you two years, hopefully, home, that's fair to you, okay, for it, if not, then the school...
Yes, yes.
Okay, no problem.
The, uh, the next question with respect to the driveways, uh, the plans show six driveways, I see three, I've shown the red arrows where three of them are in and, and three of them are out, so we don't have the traffic in here, so I'm not going to see a whole this time, but, uh, the first, and it comes in, uh, and it's one way in and one way out, over here, we have another one way in and one way out, there's some parking, and then this is one way in and, and that's one way out, the buses would drop off, uh, with that maneuver, and the bus, the students would be picked up at the end of the day, in the back, the buses coming in and going out, and it's three in and three out, so it sounds like six is a lot, but it's a lot of frontage, uh, and with one way in and one way out, and the traffic engineer will certainly testify.
How, how are so many entrances coming out on the curb, how many?
In my opinion, it's a benefit, because it'll slow the people down, if there's nothing else going on, people are going to go as fast there as they're parking in, when there's a development there, uh, it, it tends to slow the cars down, uh, but the traffic, the traffic engineer is...
What's the... So, I think, I said a couple of things on that, should we rephrase that?
Continuing in, in Terry's report, it indicates, uh, that, uh, the resign waivers were required for the driveway list later than thirty feet, and again, the traffic engineer testified that this is actually a benefit, that, that thirty-foot thing was something I was putting back in the 60, and it really should be changed next time somebody's paying attention, um...
Got the two hundred ninety days, but the problem with the minor subdivision, no?
You know, I have a very good form, tell us, you know, if you think it works, if you see my township, take email, all, they should, they should have the wedding, the wedding hall requirement in every zone, so, you don't have to...
There are, there are consent call requirements listed under schools?
Or shools.
For shools.
For shools, if anybody...
Yeah, the wedding hall requirement...
So, the wedding hall requirements are listed under shools and apply to every zone, the school requirements apply to every zone, but the school requirements are signed on by the hall.
I should put in the school requirements, you should, you should, and the point you should put up right now also, uh, the driveways, that keeps on coming up, the thirty foot of that, the driveways, they should make, oh, look at that, I don't know, I think it makes sense to ride it.
Well, it, what would make sense is, is some language in it that says for, uh, you know, if a, a small, uh, shop, the thirty feet is good, when you have a certain size, uh, large requirements, and, and there's certainly, certainly language that can go in there, that I'm sure your, your engineer can come up with, so that we don't have to ask for...
Every commercial development, it gets a comment, it's very...
Brian, how much is a regular apartment, how do you figure a regular simple home, or a shule, I mentioned, apartment?
Well, the, the shools go by, uh, if it's a shule, it's one for hundred square feet over a... Well, the, the shuls go by, it is a shul, it's one per hundred square feet over a certain size.
And a simple hall in the shul, how do you figure that?
Well, now, the, the shuls, they're by main sanctuary, and, and there's graduations. If you have a simple hall in a shul, it's one space per hundred square.
And why doesn't that apply to a running hall? She said that twice.
No, the, the comment was to make it apply. That's, that's the shul second, and since this isn't a shul...
So if this would be a simple hall in the shul, it would require one parking square per square feet?
Correct.
It's like, it's an unknown, a little user zone.
Well, because in this particular case, because it's in the M1 zone, the M1 zone has its own parking requirement, and, and...
And that applies to a...
If your engineer is looking at it, it would make sense to look at the M1 parking requirements as well. This way we have parking standards that make sense, and everybody would know what is in their plans, and everybody would know what they can do.
Well, it's the same, the same, simple hall, that would make sense for every hall, one per hundred.
But that's, that's above my paper. And I'm not going to add a paper.
If it was to build a simple hall or mine, I don't know, shul, would it go for one per...
If you were building a simple hall on Route nine as part of the shuls, would it be one per hundred?
And if the...
If you were building in the 18 zone, just a standalone simple hall, there's probably not a standard. You could probably go by a general retail space or service space, and you go one per hundred. I, I know on page four, I, I don't think it was really any conditional that I needed to write on page four. As far as about the students, that was updated in a report. A five goes over the number of parking spaces, we're showing excess, two quarters of four minutes. I didn't have anything further on the, on that report. I don't know if there was any highlights to address on consultant...
No, it's constant with us, most of it.
And that report indicates, we should tell you whether there's parking variance, and that's my testimony. With respect to the variances, I guess still involved in all that cyclical conversation that I did here being, the N S plan in 2017, division statement says encourage development and redevelopment on sport for the plant principal, my testimony is this survey of this, in terms of beneficial use.
Brian, the, all those variances also resist...
Yes, yes. The, the municipal land is lying in the AC 412 75 E2, gave encouragement, flash of guidance, appropriate use of development of land, continuing handling of the local update, and it's my testimony that this is not this. The existing front setback variance, while trying to hold the C1 and the C2, the hardship was already there, and, and then it just served the outweigh of the detriment. That would be my testimony.
What's the challenge?
Uh, they, they will need ETW approval, and if ETW doesn't do it, we'll be picked up.
Do you have a dumpster?
Uh, dumpsters are shown on the plant. Compact, the back corner of the...
That's it? Any questions on your thoughts on this? How did traffic?
Yes, what program's witness? Scott Kennel, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Scott Kennel, K E N N D L, Donovan Ray Associates, 1431 Lakewood Road, Manas Park. Thank you. Two times. First time tonight. My office prepared a traffic report dated February fourth of this year, and it dealt with the school expansion. And in summary, traffic happened conducted in December of 2018 and in January of 2019 along Sparkmore, including the site access at Lehigh and at Cedar Bridge Avenue. Projected traffic generation for the school based on, basically doubling the enrollment, so approximately four hundred and ninety-five students, which results in approximately a hundred and forty trips in the morning and a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty trips in the afternoon. The morning is pretty much in line with what we reported today based on existing operations, where in the afternoon, we overestimated. And that's attributed to the fact that students are dismissed throughout the course of the day from pre-take. So there's really no defined peak in the afternoon, and really the critical period in the morning peak hours. But taking into consideration, taking into consideration a 2029 designer pursuant to the Ocean County protocol, the intersection Cedar Bridge Avenue and Swa, Sparkmore will continue to operate at level service B in the morning, a level service C in the afternoon, with or without the additional traffic from this school. Sparkmore and Lehigh will continue to operate at level service B, again, with or without additional traffic from this school. And the site driveways will operate at level service B or better during the peak hours we analyze. As far as the site access, in my opinion, the access design is proposed with the six one-way driveways to help segregate traffic to and from the site. There's a tremendous amount of frontage. And we provide two bus drop-offs, which, based on my operation, will be an enhancement given today, which, uh, it's kind of unorganized today where the bus drop-off is. Here, we're providing two defined bus drop-off areas. We're providing defined parking areas to the, yes, to the west closer to Lehigh, we have the larger parking field, and they make sure they have their own entry and exit driveways, and the ability to segregate, to better optimize access to the site. There was a question with site distance, and that would be more of a concern for the easily driveway, and that would be the exit going to a green. This exit driveway, you have three hundred feet of stopping site distance, which provides with the recommended standards. And the way the site lays out, I see that as the, one of the lower movement driveways, whereas the other driveways in the more westerly direction towards Lehigh have an excess of three hundred feet because of the tangent we have in that part of the site. As far as parking, just a little bit of excitement really for when there are weddings. It was my understanding that there could be as many as four hundred attendees at a wedding. The industry standard is to, when you're determining parking for a banquet hall or a wedding facility, is one space for three attendees, which will work out to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty vehicles. Even if you went for two occupants per car, that's two hundred vehicles when we have almost three hundred parking spaces. So based on the fact that there would be approximately four hundred attendees, in my opinion, there is more than adequate parking to support events that would take place here.
School and weddings, if I school, is the, is correct?
Schools, schools dismissed before the wedding starts. Yeah, the school's dismissed before six o'clock. It's an elementary school. So the latest, the latest, the sixth through eighth grades get dismissed at four forty-five is the latest dismissal time, so everybody's gone by five o'clock, before the wedding, before any wedding starts.
I, I have questions actually about the circulation plan. I believe on the site plans that were submitted, sheet fifteen in particular shows the bus circulation pattern, and as indicated, you have three in, three out.
But do we have six driveways, three in, three out? Last charge, we'll have to plan out.
She can find a sidewalk. There's real sidewalk shown on the plans, and that was a wave of the applicant's agreement to do last wall path, a little concrete sidewalk. That's not shown on the plans yet. On the inside? The interior, I'm not sure if there's a lot of interior sidewalk to make. Most of the circulation plan shows the access drives coming up to the end of the town. I can't read it all of those. Let's go back to that. I, I want to talk about circulation.
So the school, school buses come in, drop off, and go out. And they pick up, they come in here, pick up, and go out.
I don't know what to, I'll pick up to go here and that's not what we're doing.
The drivers, oh, and they get a route, and the kids, the kids go out.
The kids are going to, well, the kids are going to be waiting back there at the, at the other entrance, so they're going to have to go pick them up where the kids are standing and waiting, right?
The circulation plan, Chairman, shows there were a one-way sign on each of the parking stop, each part of that. I can see these have different one-way patterns. I can see how this function should be with buses. I have questions as to how the overall site circulation functions, not just buses, but also cars. They're going to use the one way in and one way out. Are these all going to be right turns out, or are there going to be left turns for buses, left turns for cars?
The, the bus company will schedule the routes, so we intend to do right in, right out. We're perfectly happy if you were the board feel certain of these be right in, right out. We would put any restrictions, we put signs so that we could number the entrances, so anybody coming to a wedding would know, come in entrance four. We put signage, we would do whatever the board felt was necessary.
Remind me of the circulation plan. I don't see how a bus could make the left turn, so just right off of that.
Be self-regulated for some of the driveways.
These would be right turn out, I'll take that. That's part one of my question. Part two is, you have a lot of parking here. Those same access points for vehicular drivers, are they going to make left turns? Is it going to be right turn in, right turn out?
This is a two-lane roadway, which have lines that are generally on the low end compared to a lot of other roadways.
Okay.
So I would expect that it would be full movements, left in, left out. You know, obviously, if you try to sign it, it's an enforcement issue. But based on, based on the current patterns, most of the traffic is oriented towards the west, towards Lehigh and Cedar Bridge. So there'd be generally the heaviest patterns be left turns in and right turns out, based on the current patterns today, the roadway network.
Based on your review of the site geometry, the, the exit accesses would function for vehicular left turn, right turn, stagger?
That's correct.
All right. And if the board were to act favorably, we would look at signage much more detailed here in compliance to ensure that the movements were at least right.
Okay, I mean, I, I'll, you know, work with you in new lines to generate a plan that's satisfactory. My only other comment is that a discussion on the fence, you just have to make sure you put fence on the front, and it's set back far enough so that there's no impact on the site lines for vehicles entering inside its own, it's a judgment.
Any questions? I, I just, I got a little, is there someone that, that, they have to be writing right now?
My testimony is from my operations in the character of the roadway and the traffic lines, that they can be full movement, where that means left in, left out. If there is an issue as far as, I mean, there are certain driveways where buses will make right turns just because of the nature of the geometry and the self-regulation. And if there is, the request by the board to have buses that only made right turns out, that, that is additional signs to block. But as far as passenger vehicles, it's my opinion that the site would function better if it allowed both left and right turn in that particular driveway.
So, what, what can we have the drop off and a pickup on a bus on the same time, on the same spot, same driveway?
That is an operational issue, which...
Yeah, I think we're going to swear and be rabbi, Rabbi Mandel, because I think he can tell you better. It's, it's really an issue about the school functions, and we don't...
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Well, she Mandel, one of your cabinet legally. In regard to the drop-off, we're very concerned that the security and the safety of the children, being that in the morning they get dropped off during a forty-five minute span, we would like them to come in the front of the building with this somebody there for, for protection. There's an office there in the front where they come in, and the buses are staggered. They don't come in at one shot, so it only should be clear here, as opposed to dismissal where you have four or five clusters leaving at once, and the teacher doesn't go out with them, that, that would, would, one, we should go in the back with this area to stage the buses. It's a simple operational function, makes more sense this way.
We understand it's impossible for us to enforce that, and by having, by sometimes having the pickup on the other side...
There's no way they can't pick up children that are not there. If the children are taken, they're not taken from the back, they can't be picked up in the front. There's no way to pick them up. And with buses in the front, they know the buses, who this, they're doing this for twenty-five, thirty-five years. We tell them where the bus goes, and they know where to go. I never had a bus come to somewhere else to pick up those dropped with the kids, they never come to where it's supposed to be.
Right now, you have drop off and pickup.
Right now, we came, we came to try and make a six inch, we specifically asked for the space in the back, because we didn't want to have the drop that we have now on Swathmoor. And that's why we pulled it into a circular driveway. And that's what our intention is, because we're very, very concerned on safety and security. And even now, we have extreme safe rules in the school about children who go out of the area where they meant to be, they could, you know, they could suffer some of those consequences for doing that, because we're good here about security and safety.
How many buses do we have for dismissal? On the line?
Ten or eleven, I believe.
How many do you want to have?
At, probably about fifteen. Fifteen and eighteen depending on what time it's going to go by.
I'm going to be with Mr. Kennel. What's the purpose of that little driveway? It's small, unless you run a mile for that forty-five mark of spot, then you don't need to drive through the carport. That's what the purpose is, guys.
Because obviously, how the school is going to get, we only reserve capacity, but we want to do it the way that's safe. We don't want to have so much going at one shot in drop-off with this vehicle movement. When there's this pickup, everyone is stable, everyone's still, we have lineup, and then let out the buses. It's very simple, just to make it working. We're, we're in the school business for many, many years.
So this is going to be a school, a drop-off location?
Can be.
Can be. That, that spot is a very bad spot. We can just go some there, and if neither, we can do the bad. Just maybe from, maybe the six entrances or exits, three, three, we can eliminate one of them, having one at the beginning, one at the...
I believe professionals feel that it's better to have it this way than to do it the other way. I always kind of love coming out of the market, just to bring down an engineer who sat there in the truck, who started the area today, and to see where they came out. So I'm just, I'd rather stay with the safety.
I think this is, this is not a, not a good idea. I think this is not a good idea.
Jerry, what's the...
We need for that, we have other options in case we need to.
The testimony from the traffic expert indicated that for his review of the area, the final design can be made to function. If the board were to act favorably on this concept, we would be looking at final changes at each of the access, these are the access points, to make sure that there was added geometry and to make sure that goes out. The signage was basically correct, which one was okay.
It's a simple thing to eliminate the building.
Well, you could make that right in and right out, so that eliminates any left turn conflict.
Which entry is on the side?
The central of this.
The full central? Is that the loop?
The little, the small.
Okay, yeah. So you're going to eliminate the loop, that's correct?
No, no, right in and right out.
Right in and right out, okay.
So it'll be no left turn, no out, no left turn.
To be honest with you, if you look at the circulation, that's pretty much what we chose.
That's correct.
Right.
There's almost more on the project, maybe need for deliveries and stuff like that, which are not coming in the front of the building.
Yeah, basically, it's a delivery work hall.
We have the back for delivery.
Yeah, delivery's coming from there, it's currently there, it's gonna be there.
I want to look at all of it. I want to look at each intersection, and I want to see, is this a movement in? Right turn in, left turn in, and based upon what it is, the geometry of the site and that board.
Okay, Jerry, should we approve it? I think you'll have to work with the LIC also.
And that would be done in compliance with the law.
With the LIC.
And obviously, you're saying much from the LIC. If the LIC advises otherwise, that's not happening to be taken into account. I don't know whether the board can act contingent upon a favorable recommendation, a negative objection is a great, so I don't know how it works.
I think the building is situated as a curve, and having another tool can announce, or running it out actually doesn't really serve the purpose for the school or for the parking. I think we should try to eliminate that, unless there's a real reason. For school drop off, we have two segments, school drop off.
Yeah, that's a loading dock and a school drop off. There's a loading dock that can come in and has to be used over there.
Well, we have time to use the school drop off. It just says it's a really good thing. We have in the back, you know?
So why do we need the students for... We need to just build the loading dock. So the school function will be the left and the right, not the center?
That's correct.
And then how we use the loading dock for your kitchen, whatever, whatever.
Yes.
Now, my student, if I ask a question on that, your loading activities, would they be done during bus hours?
Usually, it's not. Usually, the companies tend to try to come deliveries, be eaten, or beg out, I mean, it becomes, we use the income between the early evening hours.
So put that here in a condition of approval, that it would be a comment.
Well, since we're not allowing any buses in and out.
Right.
It's not a common thing. It's not a common thing. So the buses will fall back. At the middle, we would no shade if we need to adjust the trucks. Can they come? Can they come for the buses?
Why can't the trucks use the parking lot, probably proposing that? Which is right adjacent to that loading dock.
The loading dock is not there. The loading dock can't go over the side of the curb. The loading dock is past that, not going through the block. Put the loading dock.
The loading dock right here. So the delivery system, man, it happens.
Yeah, just to start on the record, I was gonna work that out.
Actually, basically, what was said right now, the parking spaces on the center entrance...
Senator, would you please keep it down in the audience?
All the parking spaces, I see, in the center entrance will be used for staff only and for trucks for delivery. You mean the gate, the castle of, hold of?
Well, you want to take away the park for the castle.
Right. That's all right.
You always want to have as much parking for the right...
While you work with the trucks for the practical kids.
The drive-to-area, not the lot.
I'm confused.
Not, I'm gonna clarify that.
Because your concern before was to have as much parking as possible.
I'll clarify it.
One way in and one way out.
Right.
Okay.
But it can be used as overflow parking, then. If there happens to be a wedding that has a lot of cars, we certainly would want to maximize the site, I would think, that we have these extra parking spaces to be used for overflow parking. There's no safety issue, because there's no buses there, and there's no children there at those hours, but why would we have...
I don't think you have trucks either, no.
Mary, pardon me for just a minute. Let the record reflect that Mr. Stern is here. Thank you, Mr. Stern. I believe that he can sit up there, but being that he missed the beginning of the application, he's not able to act on this particular one. He certainly won't. Thank you.
Anybody in the hall who'd like to rehearse the application, please come forward. Single, one, we close the hall.
Okay, I just want to go over... Okay. I just want to go over a few things, what we agreed upon, and then Mr. Seaman has a more question. Number one, I think we need the industrial commission to give a long-term lease, which I spoke to my, I think they're gonna act on it tomorrow, to give a long lease, not a ten-year lease. I think they were ready to give a fifty-year lease.
Effectively, it was a longer-term lease. They thought they were doing the applicant a favor, because like I said, the way it's written now, it's a ten-year term, but then there are options to extend by the applicant. No option for the industrial commission to terminate. So, either way, it's a semantics. Assuming they do it, yes, I just don't want to condition the approval on...
That's number one, it's a long-term lease. Number two...
Why shouldn't we condition the lease afterwards?
One second.
Well, it's conditioned, the approval is conditioned on the lease. That's a given, yes, it's conditioned on, this approval should be conditioned on the lease existing.
Okay, I just say a few comments, and we'll see what is.
Okay.
Number one, need a long-term lease. Should by any chance this lease become void, then the applicant does not have any...
Correct.
He cannot use the school. He can use the school, he can use the hall, only if he gets more parking.
Right, that's all right. That was actually the point I said before. The approval would be conditioned upon the existence of the lease, no problem.
Uh, next.
Will school have a parking, if not, that's the parking?
One second. Number two, we spoke about the sidewalks, we'll put meandering path around the outside, we'll agree to that. Number three, number four, I think was the fence. The fence.
The fence in the front as well?
The board will have to clarify on how close to the curb they want, given Mr. Cannon's comments, and if it's within the front yard step path, that would require a vanity.
Okay. So, start with you, Mr. Flanders. What do you feel about a fence around the whole property for the school?
It's necessary.
Yes. I'm asking, I'm asking. I don't ask you again. I think that the safety for the kids, they shouldn't be running out on the street. And I, I know she asked before that, as far... As far as I know, I think even Home Land Spirit would pay for it. I know that it does point that it would have to be done on a later date, but... Just say what you feel about the side. Okay. Mr. Randon, play some. And that's all, we'll say fence.
Sharon, how are the opinions, they're acting for me for two years, is that...
Yeah. Okay, around the whole property, then? She's asking.
Yeah, the test type of towers, we work on, we work out, whatever, science department, how close to home?
I think the only thing is, when you put in the fence, that it shouldn't violate any side distances.
That's correct.
Okay, so that we worked out with you, Terry.
Correct.
The board's not supposed to find that you fence.
The, you, the, Sis, would you like the fence around the property?
I don't involve saying, I'm seeing any defenses in the direction of our schools, so.
Yeah. I'm the same, it's what you never, the body never... Okay. You agree? Okay. So the fence should be worked out with our engineer, that should violate any side distances. And I think it should be on the whole property. Now, I think, Mr. Seaman, a question about any paths inside the property going from the parking lot to the building. Mr. Seaman, has that your question?
I don't see any of them.
And what, just repeat your question.
So, I'm keeping going from the school to the playground, as an example, in the back of the property.
What do you question? So where am I at, Terry? From school to the playground, where? Hands up, Paul.
Where are your kids being coming out? From the entrance, both entrances, both sides? Is there entrance in the floor zone?
That's actually some hall?
What's that door in the front, right in the loop? Right in the door, right in the door? No, no, it's further, towards the streets. What's that door, that one? Who cares who's going in and out? Emergency.
There, there, the existing doors are gonna be in emergency.
Any other comments for any board members? Chris, no?
Close, I would ask for a motion, I think based on everything that we spoke about tonight. I would take a motion to approve it, based on no parking on both sides of the streets, within 200 feet. I would make a motion to defend, as we discussed, I would right in, right out on all six entrances, and... That's my motion.
That went against the recommendation of the traffic engineer.
I'm sorry, but if that's a motion that we have on the table, we need to wait and see if there's a second action on that.
Do we have a second on that motion? Please, Mr. Flanders, sentence.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I have that written down. That was, no parking both sides of the street, right in, right out, only at all intersections, those are the line to do such, right?
The fence, the children, the...
Yes.
After that, the long-term lease.
And the sidewalk around, and the meandering asphalt walk.
And anything that we said already?
Yep, just making sure I got it, not the last.
And I think we can clarify one more thing. Well, that will clarify one more thing. The back road, is that gonna be a one-way? It should be a one-way, I believe. Yeah. One-way going? Okay. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Seaman, a second by Mr. Fuentes.
Just to clarify, Mr. Seaman, you're saying right in, right out at each entrance?
That is my...
We left, if we don't have left turn, then that's gonna back up, right?
Eighty percent of the school traffic now is making left turn, because of the...
I'm sorry, everybody stop talking, I need to go over it.
Okay, Mr. Cannon. Approximately eighty percent of the site traffic is coming from the west or from Cedar Bridge, so they're making left turns into the site. So the prohibited left turns in is gonna force them to go down Lehigh and out the south, more, just the more circuitous route, which is not a positive...
The fact that this road is on a curve, you cannot, almost not see cars coming from that side. I think it's gonna be very scary having lefts.
But you said a lot of left turns in, you have good sightlines for left turns in. I still say you have good sightlines for left turns out, but you're gonna prohibit anyone from being left turns out, not left turns in.
Mr. Seaman, I work the area, I'm there every day. Left turn in, left turn out is not a difficult...
Left out, you know?
If you want, if you want to do it in the middle, in the middle, that's the next one.
And we agree to the two middle driveways, right in, right out, that's not a question.
Hi, if you could, can you make your motion to just right in, right out on the one?
Second. So, right, you say both entrances have your left out on the...
I think that area, how about that?
The engineer indicated he's in agreement as well.
I think what we said before, it's gonna be subject for the industrial commission anyways, to say which one, if they go over the regulation, or if they're gonna say they're all left turns out.
I'll agree to the last one. Might be right, but the last one should be left out, the left in and left out, where the most of the parking lot is, not the beginning. Not the first one, closer to the... Closer to Lehigh, you can stand, because the distance is far. The other side. There's not a lot of parking spots anyways, so we're not, it's not a big problem.
Okay. Do we have a second, or not, Amanda?
I don't think so.
No, no, no. The main, this part, we're not here with all the parking, is... The other one should be, the other two should be right in.
From the pit lane, all traffic coming from Lehigh.
Yeah, we use right here. This one, this one, this one.
This is for...
Clarify my... This one will be red. Okay, somebody clarify my motion. Randy?
I think, let's call them number one, two, and three.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Starting from the top of the...
Start, starting from the top.
Thank you.
That'll be number one.
One.
Okay, let's go for number one, we're gonna change the... Mr. Seaman's making a motion, we'll go through each one. Number one, right in, right out.
I'm sorry, right in, and left, left, it's a one-way. Okay, very good. Out of that property, that's number two, make it right out only. Excellent. The other one?
Right in, right out.
Number three and number four is right in, right out, with four restrictions. Number C? Number five, we can allow it, a left turn in. Please tell me if you're right, correct. Three, four. Three, four, five. Nobody's four, yeah.
Well, five would be left in. So it comes back with traffic at only entry. And it would be unrestricted. And had sex.
Sex is one-way out.
Question is, can we make those last?
Be like that.
You got plenty of sites that you're...
We should be over there for that now. It's already, it's, it's, fine. Okay.
So, so we got two is right out.
That's not a question about number two. If you're making it right out, you, you, you might be making some problem buses. It's basically buses coming out themselves, effectively. If you make some problem, they can only make, the kid, they can only right out. Because you might be backing them up, backing the bus on hard, on the swat mode.
This is after the dropping of the gate, they can leave the...
That's right.
They can leave the school on left, stay over there. They can make it right, go, go on Cedar Bridge.
One other time.
We'd rather have happy board members than a bus driver.
Okay.
Clarifying, most of the buses are coming from a depot, which is about an entrance of 600 feet or 700 feet to the left going to Rutgers. If you want them going to right and driving around the park, that's the decision. Okay, but it makes no difference to me.
I, I think, I, Robert O'Dell, I, I think if we would eliminate now the, the, the center entrance, now that, then there would be full access on both.
The loading dock, the kids, if you back down the building, there's a loading dock there. I'm just pointing out that you're making the buses go around the whole, the whole park.
Have to go around the loop to get back to the bus.
I don't, I don't drive a bus, I don't put them in a driving a bus. I'm just pointing what's going to happen. You're making them go right out and you're going to drive around the whole park.
You have to go around in a loop to get back to the bus. The bus depot is right there on the left. So basically, you're forcing the buses to go in a loop to get back to the bus depot. And really, the professionals are indicating...
Okay. The only thing, I, I give clarification about the motion. And based on everything we said, just, just with entrances, I think I'll do right in.
Uh, entrances two, three, four, right open, it's open.
Correct.
Mm-hmm, correct.
And the rest are full?
Yeah.
Okay, is that, is that the motion?
Correct.
Okay. And Mr. Fuentes, you second that?
I second.
Okay.
I just have a question on the motion.
Okay.
Are we able to, um, control whatever the company...
The motion included that it... You can make a contention upon that outside agency group.
That double lane then?
Oh, okay.
That we have maybe?
Yeah.
Roll, want to give that then?
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Fuentes. Mr. Segal.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel. Mr. Brenner. Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Myers. SD 2363, created by James and Williams LLC. This is a minor subdivision to create four lots from two gentlemanly. A minor subdivision to create four lots from two is fully compliant.
Terry, if I could, please, a motion. Um, there's nothing to refer to here. I think we're working on a case. Um, and then we'll get this started. Good evening. Don't you show a KDA in care of certain minus one therapy?
Mr. Rish, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give, the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate Alex trying to put us before the last application. I did not ask for that, but I do appreciate the request. So we have a fully good form application. Won't be as long as it was before. I hope not. Uh, in the R10, both lots are oversized for duplex. 14,000 per feet each duplex, 7,000 per feet per lot. Uh, we're fully compliant with which legal form of parking we have our package approval. There's wetlands on the property. We have obtained approval from the DEP for transitionary waivers. It is a very clean application. No variances. No variances, no waiver.
Do you have any questions for any board members?
Make a motion? Do you have any questions for any board members? So, number two, that's the applicant with proper signage addresses. Illuminated, eliminated, illuminated, please? I have an incident, serious telephone call this weekend. You could not find the address. It was literally life and death situation.
I was there.
The recommendation of the panel board with the permission of the chairman.
Should be sidewalks, sir? With opposing sidewalk, opposing curving. Only waiver was a request for compliance with change of commission comment. Uh, the river tracks are, yeah, a little bit further to our east. Oh, I'm sorry, to our west, which is the left of the lot.
Okay, and where is the, where's William in relationship with this?
Uh, William is also to our west.
Did you see, uh, there's two lots over from, if you look at the plan, it was two lots over the River Adams, you see right back there?
Correct.
Two lots, so is this side, uh, to the right?
It's just the west of the, um, project that was previously, uh, built with proof.
So it's next to the doors in the grocery store.
To the north side of... On the north side of... Just west of... For the, uh, right. Probably not, it's not.
Anybody from the public want to be heard on this application? So now we close the vote. Motion.
Make a motion, application to approve of that property.
Sign. Scare later for a second.
Second, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion number seven. Roll call.
Mr. Fuentes.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Segal.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel.
Yes.
Mr. Brenner.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
SD 2369 is a major subdivision to create 12 lots from six. On Locust Street, this is next to the recent major subdivision that was approved across from Harrogate. They had comments about the, um, roadway lines across the street. I do note that the representatives of Harrogate are here tonight as well.
Terry, let's go through the report.
Sure. Um, looking at our February 6 review, um, initial submission waivers on the copy page three. They include topo controls of the M222, PIS architectural drawings. For the, the B waivers, um, we support the waivers for hearing purposes. However, um, if the board acts favor, we need to run through additional topography to include, uh, the half right away with, um, Locust Street in front of the site as well as the full right away with Evergreen Gold Ward in Locust Street, Ferris Street.
Do we have a motion to go over the recommendations of the waivers?
All right, motion.
No one is moved?
Nothing.
Set the second call favor.
Aye.
Chairman, let the record reflect that Mr. Brown has stepped down for this application.
All right, um, and then under zoning, Chairman, uh, our, our first comments indicated we had a concern.
Okay, please, listen.
We had a concern at the time of the review about the density of the application. Uh, per review with the applicants planner. Uh, it, it turns out that the appropriate density is higher than the eight units that we have cited in the letter. Uh, and as a result, there's not issue with this. I think the B5 allows over 17 units.
That's correct.
Which obviously is, uh, worth suspicion. Under front yard setback variance, um, you have seven foot setback to the, to the unapproved right way of Evergreen Gold Ward. That will still have to be acted upon. And under design waivers, um, there's a design waiver necessary from improving a section of, of Evergreen Gold Ward. This is, uh, still being requested. And then finally, a waiver's been requested, uh, from providing street trees along Locust Street. I think that's all the review.
Thanks, that's fair enough. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I have a photograph of the applicant. Uh, the board member, uh, the applicant that was right next door, different applicant, uh, we gave him. We had lengthy discussion on that, uh, application. And so now this was, we didn't get at that time, there was a separate application that was coming through that, that the conversation was regarding the street. You know, to finish off, to go all the way through. This is not a cadence where Brian Clamory...
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Clamory, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. Uh, I marked two exhibits. A1 is copy of sheet 143 of the tax map. It's, uh, in its normal position tonight because the inline plan has a north hour pointing north. It includes the map showing we propose, uh, 12 foot section, which also shows the, uh, approved development to the east. Uh, the last application I heard was a clean application. This is a very clean application. We're asking for one, uh, variance. Yes, it's definitely...
Your variance is not ours.
Uh, that, that one variance is a side yard setback to the unapproved right away at Evergreen. Uh, Evergreen's a 65 foot wide, uh, right away. Uh, if you remember from the testimony last time, with this road here on County Road, the county requires 250 feet between intersections. So the county's not going to allow for that to be, uh, developed. The question of whether it will be vacated or not is up to the township committee. If the township committee vacates it, then, uh, this property gets capped at right away, so they get capped at 65. And then there's no issue. The, the, uh, setback, uh, front setback that will require to meet is to a road, there's never going to be a road there. Uh, so to me, it's a de minimis variance request that we're asking.
Was it, wasn't there approval on the previous application that that can be, that can even be opened up?
See, that's, that was the testimony last time, it's my testimony this evening. Is that can be opened because with this roadway here, you're less than 250 feet apart, it would be dangerous. The reason this one was in that configuration is because the property owners across the street, Harrogate...
Harrogate didn't want it.
Didn't want it. Harrogate's here again this evening. We're just showing... They, you can see their entrance right directly across from Evergreen Gold Ward.
So that road is not approved?
Uh, this portion, their, their entrance is here.
This part. And where are they coming from?
They, they come in all boats. And they also have another entrance on, uh, on Vermont. Uh, but, but their, their main entrance is, uh, on...
And Harrogate didn't want last time that we should improve the...
That's correct. Harrogate actually gave up a piece of property to that last applicant so that they could move it over and keep, uh, a nice buffer along the road. Part of our application tonight is that same 40-foot buffer will be extended across the front of this property. This applicant also works in Harrogate. Uh, at Harrogate, it is, is a very good, uh, neighbor that they're, they're trying to make the neighborhood nice. And, and, and they worked, uh, gave up property and are very committed. Uh, they, their landscape architect came up with plans on saving trees and utilizing this 40-foot buffer on Locust that will benefit the new neighbors, Harrogate, and all the other neighbors.
Frank, I get all, all these people worked together. Some of them, they remember about two years ago, we came up with a different application and that was, you know, confrontational. Now we've worked, we're going to put the other application, Harrogate, in this one. Come up with a comprehensive plan that we can work for everybody with.
As you can see, one... What's our chance to say?
Just, uh, you know, my, the, I got to refresh my memory. In the previous application on Ferris Street, you were going to remove June all the way to Vermont, right?
Previous application said we will not get any COs until, uh, June is developed right out to Vermont.
So I'm just here, are these two contiguous or any of the other ones?
Uh, I, I would imagine the other one, which was approved several months ahead of us, it, it is probably going to start developing, but before anybody's in these houses, June will be developed.
That's still part of the condition, I'm not changing that.
And, and this, and this applicant is committed to the improvements all the way out to Vermont.
And I remember we didn't want to put a curb and you just wanted to do left out and now finish it, right?
Correct.
I'm assuming you might, you might include a curb.
Yes, well...
We want to finish roads, we want to finish them before...
Just to be sure we're small to the right. Right, I got you.
So this is, the prior applicant wasn't permitted to curb, this applicant is permitted.
I don't know if we're going to curb, uh, Walter, is that a...
Both are going up. We have one. The one, the one de minimis variance for the side setbacks to the, uh, unapproved right. What's, I'm, I'm just, I want to say that, what, what's required, I want to... The, the, the most easterly lot has a seven-foot side setback, which is a side setback. But because this is a right way, it requires a front setback. So that's the variance relief that Rashley...
If that was a street, what?
If that was a street, we couldn't be within seven feet.
Right.
But again, if it was a street, it would be 65 feet wide, so 15 feet of it would come back to us.
I'm just curious, what are you going to do with that part of Evergreen? Are you going to...
Well, uh, because Harrogate, Harrogate is very optimistic that the township committee will vacate it and it'll be treated, treated beautiful, it'll look the way it does forever.
I just wonder, if that's what it is right now, and...
Yes.
And it is, is, so is there a consideration about the use of emergency vehicles?
Uh, no, because if they, you don't need the emergency vehicles, they have a, an access at 112 feet away.
Okay, so you're, the, the plan and the hope is that it remains grassy and looks...
Yes.
Okay.
Effectively, you're not asking for any variance, that's what's standing there.
Stay, good, good, great. You...
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, if that is vacated, then the variance goes away.
Right, that's, that's what...
And what if we have, we have not, not having the variance.
That is correct. And that's why I said it's a very clean application with a de minimis variance.
So that's...
Acting in the report.
But the, the report also, uh, mentions, uh, design waivers. The one with respect to, uh, uh, the, uh, roadways intersection with the new design that is now our size compliant. So there is no relief required on that. Uh, the second one with respect to street trees along here. And I'm, I'm going to reach our agreement with the, uh, with our neighbors, Harrogate, and, and we're providing something better than the street trees along there. And, and just so it's on the record, our agreement is that we're going to show the limits of disturbance along, uh, the buffer limit in the area of the vegetated square. We're going to locate the tree protection fence. We're going to show locations of existing trees, uh, which their professionals have surveyed and added on. And there'll be a, a table identifying all the trees and their sizes. And, and we're going to make that 40-foot buffer in accordance with the agreement with the name. So that, that'll be enhanced beyond just putting a couple of street trees along.
Frank, and just, and I, is there a group of, 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 of...
Yes.
There is, right.
Yes. Along, along our property boundaries. Along, along our property front yards. Along our property front. Just on our property front.
So you stop, you go three point oh one, right?
Yes, yes.
Or actually, actually a little bit of.
Uh, no, there's none of the small lot, small lot here for that.
The curb in curbing age at that red corner on the plan.
Right, okay, all right. That's a different, oh, different, say different, oh.
Different.
And what's happening on everyone, on, where everyone's supposed to?
Where Evergreen Locust is, or how is doing?
Yeah, we're, we're putting curb inside over across if the town ever wants to do anything different, that's up to them.
So you're, you're going to put curb inside even before they do?
Yes.
Okay.
All the way throughout till?
Well, it's also be told, up until the other project, they're putting in the airway because of the whole match.
Right.
To the center.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, to the center line.
They'll do it to the center line, and they do it to the center.
Okay.
Well, Terry mentioned the one item on the density, and the B five A will allow seventeen units per acre so we can fly. It should be pointed out, number twenty-one, that there's a ten thousand six hundred nineteen dollar impact rate that the, that the developer will be getting.
For a unit?
No, that's, that's a, that's not a issue.
What we do is not those laws.
Uh, if the other guy gives ten thousand dollars, and somebody else gives ten thousand dollars, and soon you have a million, and you do something nice. So our, our dominus variance, the master plan in two thousand and seventeen, on page two talks about the population growth. On page three, it says, based on the information, support label plan for residential development, the housing's growing population, and this property will help that. Division statement says encourage this development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles, and, and the applicant working with the neighbor certainly complies with that. The municipal land use law, NJ SA forty four and fifty by D two A, says we encourage municipal actions to guide the use of development of all lands in the state, no matter which public health safety or the general welfare. E also says promote the establishment of appropriate population densities, and, and we're providing a density that's less than what's allowed by the ordinance. These would be C two variance, the dominus variance of these is a C two variance. We need to show that relates to a specific piece of property, if we have a property to the right way, it can't be developed. The purposes of the municipal land use law, which I just stated would be advanced, variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and I think witnessing that is the fact that when Harrogate comes up, our neighbor, who's one is being implicated, would be impacted. They're in favor of this application with the development pattern that's there. The variances will not appear the intended purpose of this own plan zoning warnings, and certainly since they virtually complied at those steps, and then we need to show the benefits outweigh the detriments, and, and there are no detriments, so we, we certainly comply with that.
Chairman, we open to the public, we can, we have power, did you represent the chairman?
Yes. Good evening, my name is Susan Di Maria, from Elly Suma di Michelini. I represent Harrogate, I'm accompanied by the executive director, Charles Benjamin. Harrogate is actually donating a lot to this project, you know, we work long and hard, as, as they said, but Mr. Benjamin just wants to say a couple of words in favor.
Yes, please, if you could please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, and can you please state your name for the record?
Charles Benjamin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. As Susan said, I'm Charles Benjamin, executive director, Harrogate. We were up here several months ago regarding the other application, and as the board may recall, Harrogate has been at four hundred Locust Street since nineteen eighty-eight. We are a continuing care retirement community. We take care of residents aged sixty-two years and older, and we have a continuing care there, where they live there for an independent living, and then as their needs progress, care needs, they'll live in other settings within the confines of Harrogate. Harrogate has enjoyed a nice pristine buffer along the corner of Vermont Avenue and Locust Street for just about twenty-seven years. There's a community already built on Vermont that has had little to no impact on Harrogate from our perspective, and when we saw the application come across our, our desk for the Locust Street project, this one and the prior one, we had a concern, obviously because it's our front entrance, our residents do drive in and out of there frequently, every day, seven days a week, and we were concerned about future traffic congestion and things of that nature. We've been quite pleased with our relationship that we've developed with the two applicants, and they've come to us in good faith, mutual good faith. We have worked together to hopefully find really a mutually beneficial plan for all involved, for the existing Harrogate residents and our new neighbors across on Locust Street. So I'd like to thank the board for your time tonight. Appreciate your cooperation.
It's, yeah, it was a, you know, quite a, yeah, very nice, we appreciate it. Yes, thanks for your time tonight. All right. I would open the public, I'll have to hear this on board.
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Bozha Zainis, one one two, Albers, Lakeview, New Jersey, oh eight seven oh one.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I affirm, yes. I, I just want to clarify, Brian, because the, the former, the first application is going to have that road.
Brian, you want to give your question?
Here, and then just again, we improve also.
The first application screws into the road, and then Evergreen to the intersection was due.
I'm going to do that. Now, so basically, these guys just have a bigger backyard.
Yeah, yep.
Now, just two quick things. One over here. Would it be possible to go acrosswalks over there?
Yes.
Okay, that's one. Number two, just a comment, I'm not going to ask the board, because whatever, I just want to make a comment that way, way back, you were probably, you know, a little, whatever, way, way back on this board, on an application a few blocks away from me, something similar to this idea came in, where you had twenty-nine houses, units, and then a few months afterwards, another applicant, let's say he's calling, he's calling, gets, comes in with twelve more units. Way, way back then, the board told those people that we, we, the board, recommend that you squeeze in a shoe. I'm not going to ask anything, I'm just telling the board what, what happened way, way back when great people were on the board. They're all great guys, they're all great.
I believe Perry Street has a shoe.
Uh, in, in a different town, not, not in this town. The, the last time around, basically, there's twenty-nine units, and you only need a shoe if you have thirty, so whatever.
Twenty-five, I think.
No, twenty-five, they just pay into a thing, right?
Right, first notch, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But here's only two units.
I, I, I grant that to you, and that's why I'm not asking anything, I'm just telling you about a time when there were great people on the board, and the board realized that twenty-nine plus twelve is a little bit. Huh? What, what, but that board's in there?
It's a great board.
It's still a great board. Well, now it's actually even greater board, it's just not the same, you know, abuse. I'm, I'm, I'm entirely, I mean, what, you know, anyway, that, 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 that's right, I mean, that's the best over here. I'm at the zoning board now, so you, you got, whatever, anyway. Yeah, so that, that's all I'm, I'm.
Actually, you're in the city.
Okay, anyways, that was my whole comments, and I thank them for putting in the crosswalk. That's it, thank you.
Maybe I'll, I'll, if you heard this on board, signal, sounds to the public.
Mr. Stable has a question. Brian, have a question. We had last week, we had vacation school on, in Massachusetts, where you allowed the RSI S, just didn't allow a, two, in and out, or two axes, less than two hundred, two hundred fifty feet.
Right, right, it's not roads.
I ask if you didn't have answers on that.
I'm sure, I remember there was something specific in that.
I remember to ask this question, but I need to, it's important to us.
And this is the county road.
That's also not, in Massachusetts.
Oh.
Yeah, just to refresh, because the board, there was a lot of neighbors at the time, they came out to object this, and they did not, they weren't happy vacating Evergreen, and the applicant had to come back to make it a fully conforming application, and that was the only reason they were able to get this, because otherwise, everybody was against vacating, vacating that property or giving that waiver, because it's a sixty-five foot wide road, it's a continuation, they're giving us obviously a lot less than that. The only way they were getting, the only way they were getting that is because of the fully conforming application, which just is now, they have a couple of waivers they're requesting.
Yeah.
And this, there's no garbage, this different letter from you can always finish, because that's private.
Regular garbage.
Harry's letter says private, though. Hey, just to clarify.
I think the letters that the plan says gave, right?
Uh-huh.
Like, public works is going to want to take up the office.
Is there going to be a joint, is there a requirement for a joint?
Those are all, these are, they should be simple, so there would not be shared.
Again, it's my opinion that Evergreen should be developed, at least they are, I know how important that is, making that circle is not good, but again, we're all good things.
Anybody else who thought about your application? I would ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to deny. Do you have any more?
I'll say. My vote, which is Isaacson, Sir.
Mr. Quintez.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Okay.
Mr. Stable.
No.
Mr. Hertzel.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you, motion.
Thank you.
Two small applications, SD twenty-three forty-five, we've seen these before, these
are the ones that would be administrative subdivision, except for the fact that they're dedicating the portion of the right way of vacating back to the town, which worries the town of Orange and for the Oak Street area. Everyone, please keep it down in the audience. Thank you.
Please, you said this is the Oak Street.
That's the same one.
Same one. I don't want to, I don't want to. More properties, was the first one?
Uh, yes.
Yes, it's a, it's forming.
Oh, Brian, I'm sorry, before we begin, could you, we just, right, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Clamory, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. It's a, poor lot, completely conforming, clean, I guess is the new word, application in Oak Street.
Dedicate it back to the town?
Yes, yes, the whole thing. Uh, no, this particular one, there's a five foot strip that's dedicated back to the town, which, which leaves a thirty foot pocket park.
That's the boat?
Uh, the, yes, yep.
There's no variances?
Correct.
No, no, he's a, no.
The second, the second one, we, we already did an application where we donated it back to the town, and this is just doing a minor subdivision to chop that into six lots.
What was the point? Why, why you want to chop and set up, why you dedicate it back to the?
Well, the, the ordinance allow for administrative subdivisions in the Oak Street Core to chop it into, into lots. When there was a dedication involved, you couldn't do that as an administrative subdivision, so we did an administrative subdivision to chop the piece off, and now we're doing an Oak Street administrative subdivision that lets us chop it up into conforming lots. So this one had to be in two steps, it was already given back, so now we have the remainder of what was given back, that we chop it up into six.
Do I, do I give you two?
Why, why did you chop it up?
Well, we, we couldn't chop it up before, because if we chopped it up before, it was a major subdivision. It was a major subdivision, we had to do it.
Reason why you chop your, give it back to the homeowners, these pieces?
No, the pieces are chopped off, they give it thirty foot wide pocket park on an old right way, and the pocket park is being developed by the Oak Street Core JV, Joint Venture.
Now, you should get it all systems, uh, which you all divided?
No, this is to make the individual duplex units, like we've seen everywhere else in the ten thousand square blocks.
So what, you dedicate the land, so this won't become a major subdivision?
Well, the, the first one, if it's all done as one, because it's a minor subdivision, it, it's four lots and a piece that gets given to the town. The second one, because it's six lots, we couldn't just come in as one map and do it as a minor subdivision, because it was six, it's no longer a minor subdivision. So that one, we came in first, and we took the piece off. You can see in this one, we're, we're giving the piece to the township, this one, the piece was already given, so we came in, previously, we gave the piece to the township, it left us with a three hundred foot by a hundred foot parcel, we're now chopping that three hundred foot by a hundred foot parcel into three duplexes with fifty foot wide decimeral.
So just from my education, so why do you give land to the township to do this?
The township vacated the, the roads, and, and the, this whole area was developed, the township did a caper application, and they showed the improvements, and they did it all as a coordinated effort, and part of that was, there were two rightaways that the township didn't feel need to be improved, so the township doesn't have to plow and maintain them, and they said, we'll do them as pocket parks. So there's a, a Oak Street Joint Venture Group, that's a combination of all the developers, and these developers met with the township, and they said, if you vacate these, we will build pocket parks, through mostly just meandering paths and benches, so that there's a way for people to walk between and sit down.
Got it, okay, thank you.
I, I, I don't know if you want to do them individually, or?
I will, I will. I will.
The first one is a minor subdivision, technically, you don't understand.
Okay, so on number eight, more properties, anybody in the public who heard the application? Stay known, close the vote. I would ask for a motion on number SD two, more properties. Isaacson, Sir, local.
Mr. Quintez.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Stable.
I'm standing.
Um, Mr. Hertzel.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, I would ask for a motion on number nine.
Sorry.
I think it was, it was Brian, I don't know.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Quintez.
Mr. Quintez.
Yes.
Mr. Stable.
I'm standing.
Mr. Hertzel.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the, for the public, I didn't ask before, but I'm a good town, I think.
Number ten is carried, told for their notice.
And I think they have to be noticed.
They will have to be noticed, they did not submit revised plans, that they indicated at the way of media, they're still working with the neighbors, I believe, so we kind of get it.
As far as I know, they're looking at.
Okay, okay.
I think we should, we should, we should. I, I think, it's stable, they, they will come back, they, they come back on. Yeah, no. Approval of minutes? Move. Second. I. Approval bill, move.
Second.
Aye. Chairman?
Thank you.
Move.
I bring a challenge, maybe four or five.
They, 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 they.
They were here, I'm sorry, they were here for a couple of times, I'm sorry.
Ma'am?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I apologize, I apologize. My mistake, my mistake.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, my name is Sylvia Hahnfeld, fifteen hundredth Avenue.
Okay, ma'am, we're just going to square you in. Can you please raise your right hand? Uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony or testimony of the board will be the, give the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can you please state your name and address?
Sylvia Hahnfeld, fifteen hundredth Avenue. Last name H A G E N F E L B, first name is I L E I J A. Thank you. Um, I would like to address the synagogue being built on Kennedy Boulevard, Sagmar Synagogue. I was unable to speak to Mr. Jackson about it, so I would like to address my concerns to you, I may.
If that was approved already?
I know.
If you have any legal concerns, I don't mind you speaking.
They're, they're not legal, they're just questions that I was not able to get answers to. Is that all right?
I, I, I listened to you, I asked for a turn. It asks for a...
I, I did call Mr. Jackson three times and the secretary perhaps, it was you, said she will pass it on to him, I never heard from him.
Well, ma'am, usually, how this works is that the, uh, application was heard at a public hearing and did you, you did have a chance to speak at that public hearing?
I did, but I, I, I'm sorry, I was not able to see the plans because they were not facing the public, they were facing the members by that time. I just, you know, didn't get around to speak what I had to say.
Is there a reason she can't speak?
No, she can speak.
No, yeah. Like, it's just, it's just some...
There's nothing that can change.
I know, but perhaps she can answer.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, by the way, I'm very much opposed to that anyhow and to the members who voted against it, I thank you. Uh, now, at the last meeting, Mr. Spencer prevent, uh, gave you the wrong facts. He said Kennedy Boulevard is eighty feet wide, that is incorrect. We measured it, it's fifty-four feet from curb to curb, so that's one thing. Then, the garbage in the back, the garbage in the back is not acceptable to us. It should be on the other side of the building because we're right next to it. We are exposed to the odor plus possibly rodents, okay? Then my next question was, in the chain link fence, is it going to be a see-through or is it going to be a solid? Because we don't want to be blocked in. Plus, I would like to see the masterpiece of architecture that is going to put the nature, mother nature, to shape, okay? And then, uh, Shetree Committee, I tried to reach Shetree, Shetree maybe three times, actually a whole week, and I was able to do that finally. I spoke to Mr. Gordon, he was not aware of this project taking place and my question to you is this, why is his number not more available? Because his input is just as important as yours because without trees, all of us will not survive. That is all I had to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, uh, whatever, if you have any negotiations, feel free to call Mr. Jackson's office.
I did.
I know.
No action.
He was on vacation last year.
I know, in Chicago.
I don't know where you were, I didn't know.
I can tell you.
But, uh, is any people should reach out to...
Very good.
...Jolyne and should...
I did speak to you, I remember now. Okay, thank you again, have a good night.
Thank you.